I would call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM, it's July 28, 2021. This is a hybrid meeting, which means it's Zoom as well as in person. And the Board of Selectmen members are in person. We have some, I believe, some people on Zoom. This will be uploaded, is it live, actually on YouTube now?
Um, it's not, I'm actually live on YouTube right now. It'll be uploaded to YouTube.
So this meeting will be uploaded to YouTube and it's also live on Channel 9. It's being audio and video recorded. I would ask everybody to stand for the pleasurable allegiance and also to remain standing.
My pleasurable allegiance is to the flag of the United States, America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Since our last meeting, the following, Dyton residents have passed. Our thoughts and condolences go out to the family of Gertrude Gray, who is 96 years old and retired from AT&amp;T with five grandchildren. Robert Morgan, who is 87 years old, a Korean War veteran and retired from the Foxborough Company. And Helen Simmons, who is 82 and retired from Texas Instruments with one grandchild. At this time, I respectfully ask for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we initially had two scheduled appointments. And one of them, Kenneth Raymond, will not be held tonight. But the first one is the Dyton-Hobart High School Golf Team Certificate of Recognition. Could you all, all the members of the golf team, please stand? Town of Dyton Board of Selectmen, 979 Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass., 02715, Certificate of Achievement. We, the undersigned, do hereby proudly present the Certificate of Achievement to the Dyton-Hobart High School Golf Team in recognition of the exceptional efforts and achievements in winning the South Coast Conference in Championship. Congratulations, you have made Dyton proud. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and caused the great seal of the Town of Dyton to be affixed on this 28th day of July 2021, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dyton. Kenneth Pacheco, Chairman, Lennon Held, the Clerk, and Brett Segraffis, a member of the Board of Selectmen. Does someone want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As coach of this fine group of young men, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the members of the board for inviting us here tonight. This is a very special recognition for us and we're very appreciative of being here. If I could, I'd just like to briefly introduce to you the gentlemen that are here tonight because they do represent the Alpha and Omega of our team, if you would. First of all, we have two seniors that are present tonight. Peter Anganetti, who was a four-year member of the team. Peter is headed to Stonemilne College in a couple of weeks. And my other senior on the team is Cam Tavoris, who transferred this year from Virginia. So he spent a very unusual senior year at Dyton-Hobart, considering that most of the year was done remotely. But Cam fit in beautifully with us and Cam's headed to Drexel University in Philadelphia in a month or so. I'd like to introduce our two team captains for the upcoming season. Mitch Bushell will be a senior, Peter Torres. Both of them have been members of the South Coast Conference All-Star Team for two consecutive years. Andrew Machado will be a senior with us this year. Andrew has been a real contributor to our team. He was a major reason why we won the championship match this year and we're expecting a great deal out of Andrew in the season that's going to be starting up in less than a month. And we have two freshmen with us tonight, Jordan Deeks and Brady Fontaine. They are the freshmen, they're the future of the program and they are developing into very good young players. So again, I want to thank you gentlemen from the board very, very much on behalf of my team. I just want to give Pete and Mitch as captains for the upcoming season a chance to perhaps address the board. And again, thank you again, gentlemen, this is very, very special.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sure if the other captains were here, they would say the same thing that I said. We definitely thought we were one of the better teams going through the season, but not like cocked, but like, I don't know how to say that. But anyways, we felt we took a couple tough losses in the middle of the year that we didn't really expect to come our way. But we stuck our foot down and we just pushed through because we knew that if we all played at our best, that we were better than anyone that was going up against us. And the other team was really, really shocked that we beat them. I don't think any of us here were really shocked that we beat them. So it was a good, good win and I'm ready to do it again this year.
We beat it at the right time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Gentlemen, thank you again, this was very special. We appreciate it very, very much.
Does the board have anything to wish to say? I can say that my older brother, one of my older brothers is a golfs all the time, spends all his time. And he would always ask me if I wanted to play golf and I would always answer him that I wasn't old enough to play golf. But just looking at the young gentleman here, clearly I am wrong. So it's nice to see people taking, taking advantage of this, the school having a golf program and going as far as you can. So again, thank you very much. I'm going to give the certificate.
Mitch, Peter as captains for the coming season, why don't you accept them on behalf of the team?
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, is it possible to grab a photo?
Great.
I would've worn a tie if I knew.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, watch it because of the wire.
It's just hot in the summertime.
You can open, I want to shake your hand. Shaking your hand. You can look towards the, at the camera.
Say, one, two, three, golf.
Golf.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Q, before you go, I just wanted to say it was an honor to have you as my high school history teacher. And in all seriousness, you were coaching championship golf teams back then in the early 2000s.
We've always been blessed with good talent.
I think you may be part of the good talent.
This is, this is season 45.
Forty-five.
Wow, congratulations.
These guys keep me calm. Thank you very much.
Good work, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next scheduled appointment was to be Kenneth Raymond's Certificate of Recognition and Gratitude. But State Representative Pat Hadad has had a meeting, I believe, in Boston and she's not able to attend. So they've asked that we continue this to August 18th.
Yes, sir.
At our two meetings, Town Selectmen's meeting. So I will entertain a motion to move this to August 18th.
So moved second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. The next agenda items, committee commission spotlight, Dyton Trails Committee.
Yeah, no, it's mine now.
You've lost it. So this is Jeff Cavalo, I believe you're the chairperson of the Dyton Trails.
Yes, sir.
And are you also, excuse me, are you also a member of?
Bob Bagliani. And we have a special guest, Mr. Bill Ponatano in the back here.
Hey, Bill.
From Serpent. Came to offer some, offer some support.
So each, each Selectmen's meeting will spotlight a committee, Town Board. And this, this week it's going to be the Dyton Trails Committee. So thank you for participating in this.
Okay, let me get the presentation load set up first.
Sure. I can't see the little buttons way across the room. Topic.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, just minimize it, Jeff, that's fine. Drag it, yeah. There you go.
All right, thank you, members of the Board of Selectmen and folks at home. And thank you, Bill, for coming out to join us. So my name is Jeff Cavalo, I'm with the Dyton Trails Committee and I'm joined by Bob Bagliani here, also a member of the Dyton Trails Committee. And we're a small committee and we've been getting a lot of things done. So we wanted to come in here and talk to you about what we've been able to accomplish in a short amount of time and what we'd like to do in the years to come and more importantly, this coming fall at the special town election. So first slide here, an agenda of what we're going to talk about. This brief is brief, I promise. It's only, only a handful of slides. One thing I wanted to point out on this agenda, you'll see a lot of photographs in this, a lot of very visually intensive briefing. I wanted to make it look, have a lot of eye candy, so to speak. But I want you to know that all photographs are sourced from Dyton. So everything you see here is here. This is actually down just to the east of Somerset Avenue. If you head straight out, there's a peninsula out there. You can actually, at the right time of year, you can see some seals out on those rocks. So that's, that's a green trail, we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But so what we're going to talk about today, and I'll point out the pictures so you know what we're taking, what you're looking at. Vision statement, just a quick overview of what we see ourselves as a committee, how we can serve in the committee we've been entrusted to serve. Some of the local activities we've been up to, some continuing efforts and of course, role on who's, who's involved. So this is, this is Sweet Snoll. So what's our vision, overall vision is we want to, we see ourselves, Dyton, as number one, you know, a very beautiful community, a lot of, a lot of natural resources. But we also want to recognize that we have ourselves in an optimal location to be tied into the, to the community. So our vision statement really focuses on that. I don't want to read the words off the slide here, but we really want to align ourselves with the communities around us. To, to the north, Taunton, to the south in Somerset and all points going north, southeast and west from there. With a big focus on, right now, the current news is a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of money's going into the Taunton River Trails concept. And the Taunton Pathways Committee has been able to recently secure quite a bit of funding to, to make a lot of the ideas and, and the plans that have been in the works for some years, reality. So the Taun, what is the Taunton River Trail, if it was not familiar? It's actually a vision that's been in the imagination of a lot of people like Bill Ponatano for several decades. But it's, it's a 22-plus mile multi-nodeal network. Multi-nodeal is the key term, not just walking, not just biking. We're also envisioning access for kayaking and everything in between. So we want to, we want to have Dyton to be one of the many nodes in this overall concept. And that's kind of where we see ourselves and trying to tie that in. So how do we put that in practice? Another Sweet Snoll picture. So we're, we'd like to try to get as many elements as we can upfront, looking at existing inventory, seeing what's out there, seeing either, either planning or putting in new trails or dressing up existing trails. So we've been kind of, that's been the approach. Step one is take an inventory of what we have. Step two is refine what's existing and identify where we can go next. So we want to tie into the communities, not just for recreation, initially for recreation, but it would be great for also, in addition to recreation, for promoting healthier lifestyles, but also have the ability for people to use these same pathways for work commute or shopping. Because you know, you look at the central part of Dyton, I know that we're, we got some shops there, but it would be good to be able to connect that. Am I getting too close to the top there, maybe? Connect that, I think you got to allow somebody in. Yeah. Yeah. To connect that to, from, from points north and south. So you've got the shopping center area in the middle of Dyton, around the Town Hall, going north to Taunton, where you've got their waterfront area. And you've got also our southern parts down at Broadcove Nature Trail, where you've got the boat ramp, you've got other things to look at. So there's a lot of points of interest throughout the town and we're looking at this as a way of tying that all together. Try not to ramble, but it's happening. All right, so local activities, another Sweet Snoll picture. Just real quick, I'll talk about a couple that are near and dear to our heart. And one of them is the Sweet Snoll State Park project by the Department of Conservation and Recreation. And another one is Broadcove Nature Trail. And this was a bit of amazing news that fell into our lap on day one when we first, we met for the first time as a, as a committee. Bill Ponatano and Phil from Taunton Pathways Committee told us all about this great news that the Department of Conservation and Recreation is planning on doing a, turning the abandoned railroad right of way that runs through most of the Town of Dyton into a rail trail. What does that mean? As of, as, more recently, we learned from Paul Janegy, who's a director at the Trails and Greenways at DCR, that they were awarded the design and engineering funding to build a two-mile trail that starts as far south as Somerset Avenue behind Alice's last stop and goes as far north as Sandpiper Road. Got somebody else to let in? There you go. So that, that right now, that's, that's a large portion of what we have in mind for the Taunton River Trails, overall theme for the, overall concept for the Town of Dyton. But the interesting thing is we'll note that there are some key elements there. Crossing over, crossing underneath Center Street, not over Center Street, crossing underneath Center, going behind Town Hall and everything in between, and also sticking out the bottom there. So it's, it's a, it's a large chunk and, and you know, kind of a windfall of the Town of Dyton. So really looking forward to what this is going to look like in the coming years. But one thing to keep in mind is, this is great. However, I've mentioned to some other folks that this is, we're calling this the DCR Island. Because this, this is great and this is wonderful, but how does this tie into the north and tie into the south? And that's where we, as a committee, want to make sure we're doing the best we can to prepare us for when this is going in, to say, okay, we're ready for tying into Taunton. We got that all figured out, we've done our homework. We'll talk about that in a couple of minutes. And then on the south, we also want to make sure we're preparing there to know what we want to do once we get onto Somerset Avenue. That one's a little bit easier to figure out because there is something there, but there is obviously a challenge and many have options, many options for doing that. So looking on what this looks like at the south. Okay, what, what does it look like on the south end? The south end is what you see there. Looking at the roadway behind Somerset Avenue right by Alice's last stop, that terminates right on the road. And the Highway Department was able to leverage some of the ongoing work that was already going on that road for drainage and cleared out a section. And the Serpent actually gave us a sign, you see that sign there for the Taunton, Taunton River Trails, right there in the bottom left picture. So if you go behind Alice's last stop, you'll see a parking area and access to a trail. It's not very well marked. The intent is to eventually mark that better and to also install a trailhead. And for something we're thinking about putting in, which just showed up on the bottom right there. That picture on the second slide where it said you can walk out behind Alice's and you go up, Alice's and go out to a peninsula, that's the peninsula on the bottom right on that, on that slide. And so we were kicking around the idea of, we're calling it the green trail that would go through there. We, we had a conversation with the Conservation Commission. There were some snags there, but we're still working some of the details. So we're kind of leaving it still as a maybe at this point, but we definitely want to develop that. So that's on the south end. On the north end, I don't have any slides on the north end because there's still a lot of unknowns. But that's part of the feasibility study, which we'll talk about in the coming slide. Switching gears a little bit, what else have we been working on? On, this is part of the existing infrastructure to develop and, and make it more formal. Broadcove Nature Trail, which is 25-acre lot on the south end of Dyton. And this is existing and there's a lot of trails already cut in and a lot of work that was done by Jonathan Gray, one of his Eagle Scout projects. And a lot of other hands have been involved in this, including the Conservation Commission, with putting in a number of platforms along the trail. So we want to go through and we're, we're looking to formalize the trails, making a trail map, and, and we have a trail kiosk, which I think I have in the next photo here. So these pictures here show additional work we've been doing. So on the west entrance of the Broadcove, we installed that trail kiosk. We have a trail map that's currently under construction. Bob's been working diligently to get that wrapped up. We've been going kind of around on a few different options and our next step is to formalize that with the Conservation Commission. And I don't know if we have to go to this body as well, just to review that and see what that looks like. But we want to put that in that kiosk. And the intent is also to put another, a smaller version of this on the Hart Street entrance to the north. So no matter which way you're coming in, you've got a map and it'll show you, give you the overview of the, of the trails and give you a nice map and also have the ability to, I can put a QR code maybe there so you can download the trail map to your phone if you want to take it with you. So also park benches. So we have, we bought the, the kit to make a bunch of these concrete-legged park benches. Seems like a simple thing, but it's very, it's very resilient. A bunch of pressure-treated wood and roughly 250 pounds of concrete. And so we can put those in. We have a couple of those installed. We have one seven footer and a big 14 footer we put in a month ago. So that's, that's where we've been at with Broadcove. Next slide, another Broadcove picture. So, which comes to, where do we go from here? So big bullet on the top there is we are pursuing a feasibility study specifically to tie that DCR Sweet Snoll two-mile section to Taunton and Somerset. And the intent is to put together a, an article for the fall special town meeting and to, to look at options for not only on-road, but also off-road options for tying to the north to Taunton and tying to the south to Somerset. And one thing to note is we, we have already gone through the CPC funding method or approach, put the proposal in, it did not unfortunately get picked up. So in talking to Mike, we decided to initially put it on the annual town meeting in June, just a, a non-motion article and with the intent of following up and being able to try again this fall. So that's going to be the focus entirely on turning, turning that two-mile section into something to, to look at the options and to have a professional firm come in to look at what is possible in the realm of possibilities for, for tying that in. And the reason the feasibility study is important is when we go out for, for grants, we need to have some kind of reference material that shows, okay, we've done our due diligence, we've done our homework as a town. It's not just a bunch, it's not just a, a board of volunteers said, hey, wouldn't it be great if we can do this, we've done our research. But it gives us some reference material to, to use and will give us a better opportunity to be able to get grants awarded from moving forward. Other things we continue, we're going to continue working on. We've already talked about some of the work at Broadcove, where we're finishing up trail map, marking trails and also continuing additional bench, bench and adding a kiosk. And then also had a great piece of information from the last annual town meeting where there were some lots that were accepted by the Town of Dyton on Main Street. Particularly the map 17, three lots there, the 129, 131 and 164. So we're looking at planning trails that connect from Main Street around the, around Elm Street Pond to Council Oak area. So we want to look at that. We, at our last group meeting, we had a member, an Eagle Scout candidate came in. So Bob, Bob was involved with the Boy Scouts and one of our other members, Rachel, as well. So we're trying to reach out to Eagle Scout candidates and other community partners who want to come alongside the Dyton Trails Committee, either for community services or for one of their Eagle Scout projects, right? Or Eagle Scout project, Capstone project. So we had, we had kind of a brainstorming meeting. So we had a big list of projects and the intent is we're going to take that list and, and fire it out on the Facebook page just to give people ideas. Because a lot of times, folks going out for those kinds of projects don't really know what's needed. So we want to give them, give them some ideas to get the creative juices flowing. And continuing the green trail idea off of the Sweet Snoll south end there, behind there. So that's that. So this is just a quick roll-up of who's on the committee. Bob, I mentioned Bob is here. Not present tonight is Rachel O'Conte, Rachel Begann and Karen Alves. She couldn't be here tonight. And that link there, that's an active link. If you click on that link, it'll go out and it'll show you the overall concept of what we're thinking for the Town of Dyton. Not an official, set in stone idea, just on-road and off-road sections we're looking at in the different parts of town. With that, I submit to your questions.
So thank you. I was going to ask you about, would you be eligible for grants? But you have already answered that question.
Okay.
And I would like to let the board know that I did ask him, as you know, we're going to have a public hearing on the flag policy for the town. But I also think we ought to be discussing other warrant articles that are coming up for the special town meeting. And I believe your committee is willing to do the same presentation to the residents of town so that they can know what this is all about and why you're asking for the $30,000.
Okay, yeah, we'll have more detail and focus specifically on the feasibility study. We can present that.
I appreciate all the work that you've done. Does the board have any questions or any comments?
I have a couple. My first comment is actually related to something you just said. Something, and I don't know if we could do this in time for the special town meeting, but something that I believe the Board of Selectmen used to do, Selectmen Gulab is in the audience, was have some kind of a public information session before the town meeting that explains what each article was. Like in, in a way that people would understand, right? Not legalese, not any bylaw language, just this is what this means. You know, and then people can decide how they want, want to vote. So maybe that's something we could think about in the future. Regarding your presentation, and thank you for it, it was very well done and very informative. You had mentioned a vision of eventually tying into Somerset. I know there's a lot of work going on between Dyton and Taunton and I know the two committees talk. Is there anything going on, on like the Somerset end? Because I've never heard of anything on their end.
In, in 2020, we, we were planning a, like a public outreach, information, what are we up to and who are we talking to, sort of thing. And we were talking with Nancy Durfee, the town planner in Somerset. And, you know, we had ideas and we told her what we were thinking about. So in, in the more recent history, I know Nancy Durfee through Mr. Ferry, Tom Ferry, reached out to Mr. Mullen here about doing some work along the turnaround point on 138. So there's, there's a So there's, there's a, there's a trail right now down in Somerset that's right on the Dyton line, and they wanted to get access from Dyton to get to their trail. So they, they have a budding trail and we, we want to do work on that turnaround point to tie into there. That doesn't tie directly into the Broad Cove idea.
Sure.
But that's, that's on the west, that's on 138. So we talked to them briefly about that. I know in Somerset, when we talked to Nancy Durfee, their biggest, their, their biggest asset right now is SCBA, South Coast Bike, Bike Way, that runs east and west. So that runs across the, used to be the Bretman Street Bridge, I don't know what that bridge is called now, whatever that is. It runs over that bridge and runs east. There's a lot of networks in Fall River that come over to Somerset and they want to continue that further west. So our goal is to get to that so we can tie to that in Somerset. That's the major hub. But we're also looking at smaller things like that turnaround on, on 138. So Tom, Tom was more recently in touch with Nancy in Somerset, but we, we've been in touch in the past, but we, we are more actively engaged with Taunton because they have a lot going on right now.
We may, just as an aside, we may need to find a new contact because I think Nancy's contract wasn't renewed recently, so we'll, and Richard, the current town administrator, is also leaving, so we'll need to find someone that we can connect with, maybe on the planning board in Somerset that can continue the project. My other question is, the Green Trail, is that contiguous with the Taunton River Trail? And regardless of that, my sub-question is, how, if we link up with Taunton, I'm not even going to talk about Somerset, how much contiguous trail would there be if everything that the Trails Committee visions happens?
Well, the connection from said, the Green Trail to Taunton would be via the DCR Sweet Snoll Trail. So from that point, north would be two miles to Sandpiper Way. And then it's, it's probably like an eighth of a mile from there to the border, to the Three Mile River. Like a distance from Sandpiper Way to the Three Mile River is the distance in the Taunton. And right now, I know Taunton isn't coming all the way to the Dyton line, or, or I think they're stopping just north of railroad. So there's, so we're, we're kind of doing this, we're marching towards each other slowly.
I understand.
Do you know Bill? Is Bill still here? What's the idea for, if we were to tie in, I know we have two miles in Dyton, I know the division is 22 miles, but that's, that's a, a lot of different networks.
Yeah. Part of what I want to do is maybe get up, capacity behind the Dyton Town Ball, DCR is going to do the entire design engineering for railway. Right up behind the town ball, I think we're at about San Diego Lane, but then you'd have to come up onto Route 138 for a very short distance and then drop down on one of the side streets in Taunton, get back on the trail. Probably the TMLP actually, they sort of go away from the TMLP property and then go right up to the waterfront. From the waterfront, it actually goes into the downtown. And now Taunton's going to be able to go up Route 138 as well because they're servicing 138 and going to put shaduce path lanes on there. And as far as Somerset goes, I know Nancy isn't there anymore, but she actually had trail signs that were going to put up on Riverside Avenue because years ago Riverside Avenue was part of the Taunton River Trail. So what Jeff was saying before is you can come up Veterans Memorial Bridge from Fall River. And I've spoken to Alan Lewin in Fall River too, he's really interested, he's dying to evolve this. Go up Riverside and you go right past, obviously Broad Cove. Broad Cove would be a spur that would run parallel or beautifully, and you go Riverside and up to Pleasant Street. I think he could put up signs on Pleasant Street, right Tom?
Tell me.
Well, that's a plan he doesn't select me. I mean, 2012, Alan and I made a presentation, I thought Pleasant Street would be good, so Tom, Tom did what we asked him to do, and he put some signs out there and actually the signs are great. So that'll take you right up to the entrance to what's now Sweet, Sweet Snoll State Farm, that Jeff had in his slide, you had that little. So everything that Jeff's talking about that could be fired, like you know, a Green Trail here would run as a spur or parallel or, or all the smaller trails that he's talking about would run actually off the main spur in Sweet Snoll and went out to the water. And one of the plans too, so you all know that the Taunton is designated Wild and Scenic, currently designated Wild and Scenic. We've now developed enough waterfront puddings along the Taunton River in Berkeley and Dyton, now up in Taunton. We're working out with Middleborough, Bridgewater. So we're going to see if we can get designated as a National Blue Way, Green Way. So it's a waterway trail as well. So it goes out between, and there would be grant funds available. And Jeff talked about maybe getting some grant funds. And the Taunton Superior Council has talked about entertaining a proposal from the Taunton by me from the Dyton Committee to come in and be eligible for up to $40,000 to be a design engineer. So we could match money that the town could put out there as well.
One last question, I, I promise. When, if we were to become, have that route become a scenic water, waterway?
Like Blue Way, Green Way, Scenic.
Sure. Does that open future opportunities for grants? Like I know we could get a grant to help us do that, but then are there more opportunities if that gets done?
Absolutely. There's opportunities to develop waterfront access then and develop waterfront programs. So, and a great opportunity to kind of even tie in with the Taunton River Water Shield Lines because they, using their facility in Sweet Snoll, there's a river center now. And we plan to do some, you know, work there, maybe potential upgrades, so.
Wow, okay. That's very interesting.
I just looked at a, a quick comment to that. I've already got it cut out. How to answer your question on the continuous length, that's not the answer I haven't heard. I think we're talking about five miles if we implement the two meantime projects to get the two communities, biting plus taun.
Twenty-two if everything connected. I understand that.
It's, it's hard to title them together, yeah.
But the, but the, of the two major projects that we see, so Dyton's about 2.2, Taunton's about 2.5. And then it, so the study we need to concentrate on how to connect those pieces together, you know, ballparked out in five, five and a quarter mile one way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Hull, I think you had a question.
Yes, Mr. Hull. Dyton has quite a history in Native American involvement in this community. I was wondering if your committee had worked with the Historical Society or Commission here and the Native Americans in this area to see if there are any noteworthy sites along your trail.
Not yet, but that's a great idea. We can, we can reach out to them to see if there's some, like information kiosks or something like that, or?
Are you familiar with the old Bristol Path?
I am not, no.
King Philip, that came right up, actually Elm Street in Dyton.
Okay.
Up 138 into Taunton.
Okay.
1670s, a lot of history. Encampments here in Dyton. I was just curious as to if your path crosses anything that they have done and if out of facts or any historical law that could become information on the trails.
I think, you know, we're in the process right now of putting that trail map together. I mean, it would be probably a good idea to also talk to them as well, the Historical Society, to see if there's something we should, something additional landmarks or something we can put on, on that, that work so that we can have an additional, you know, point of interest to, to go check out or, or something to keep away from, so to speak.
Yes, it's the Historic Commission, not the Historic Society.
Historic Commission, got it. Thank you.
To Selectmen Hull.
And they meet the, the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
And Patricia Gales is the chairperson of that.
Okay.
Commission.
To your point, Selectmen Hull, I forgot to tell you this and I had meant to and I apologize. There was a gentleman that I met at the Firecracker Festival. He's actually on the Historical Commission. His name is slipping, you might actually know his name, tall gentleman.
Bill Pruitt?
That, yes. He actually knows the former members of the Intertribal Council and still is in touch with them. So it might, he might be someone that you might want to reach out to, Jeff, to get in touch with them.
What was his name again? I'm sorry.
I think, what, it, Bill Pruitt?
Bill Pruitt.
Okay.
He's a member of the Historic Commission as well as the Society.
Oh, okay. He's on that, okay. Okay, I'll look it up on the Dyton page.
I was going to say, we have members of the Intertribal Council, the Taunton Superior Council.
Perfect. Oh, that's good.
We can, we can help you.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
That's great. Does the board have any other questions for Jeff or Bob?
No, I thought that was a good job and I appreciate you hanging in there. I did want to say, I think the fact that the town has been fortunate enough to get some recent grants that will free, free, free up some monies that had previously been voted on by residents that we, I'm happy to now consider the feasibility study. And I think it's timely, given the monies that Taunton has gotten from the Invest Act, that we could maybe make some work on this. So I appreciate you guys continuing this very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Gula?
Nancy Gula, 631 Red Terrace. You mentioned the pond on Elm Street. That's not part of the property we accepted.
No, no, we're, I, I just use that as a reference point.
That's on the list. But if you stop at the lots, the frontage on Main Street, you can go all the way to Brook Street. That, those three lots have restrictions on them from Asprey's Center.
Okay.
They can then be developed, they can be dug, they can be, you know, digging for anything. So it's open space and recreation.
Okay.
And then you'll get up to the Council Oak, which has both agricultural and conservation restrictions, but it's great for trails. And you can go all the way to Brook Street. It's the ferry that's estimated, that's roughly at least a mile of walking trails on Taunton land.
Okay.
So that's very good. You contact the Intertribal Council, the last chief I'm aware of is Rusty Haskell from Berkeley. And Mr. Hull had asked me for that, so you have his address and phone number?
Well, I have his phone number, yes.
Okay.
I'll get it.
There are other members, but he is the person that has responded in the past few years to everything the town has had. He came to our MVP program, he was here for the grand opening this fall. And so Rusty Haskell on Brook Street is the contact.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
For giving us this presentation.
Thanks.
So our next agenda item is public input. I know that former Selectman Robert Perry wished to speak. You just go to the podium, please.
Good evening, gentlemen, and good evening to all my fellow residents of the town of Dyton. My name is Bob Perry, I live at 1531 Stanzeon Drive in North Dyton. I'd like to briefly address two issues that are on the forefront of my mind. First one, the issue of what the US flag represents has become a hot topic of late within our town. I believe the flag represents many things, but first and foremost, represents the Constitution of our nation. The framers of our Constitution were not perfect people, neither we. They were not saints, and neither we. However, they gave us a living document, a guide to government of the people, by the people, and for the people. A document that has been interpreted and improved since the day it was written. As time goes by, we can and we must improve upon it to ensure liberty and justice for all. I believe our flag represents that, represents that philosophy as well as those that have stood to ensure it endures. My second point, there has been considerable discussion in various public formats regarding the use of so-called town property. We, the residents of Dyton, are the town and the so-called town property is our property. We elect various representatives to administer our property. Regarding the matter of flying flags on our property, I suggest a committee of town residents be formed to address the issue of flying flags, other than the US, the flags of the armed forces, the POW and MIA flags, and the state flag on our property. Once formed, the committee must be independent of all elected and appointed boards. It is essential the committee be balanced, representing the diverse views of all of our residents. The end result should be a draft town bylaw for the residents of our town to express their desires at the annual town meeting, or more appropriately, by ballot vote. I recognize the responsibility of our Selectmen is to manage and administer our property. However, this particular issue has generated such non-productive and divisive discussions in multiple forums that this issue should not be decided by three votes, but it should be decided by a vote of the 5,800-plus registered voters in our town. And I request you gentlemen move in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. For those that don't know, Robert Perry, you should know him, but he's the highest ranking veteran in town. He's Colonel from the, Colonel of the Air Force. So there's the.
Well, that is, we, we are doing that.
Well, we, what he's suggesting, what Mr. Perry is suggesting is that we form a committee. What we, what we've discussed and what we plan on doing is, I'm not sure if you've watched every meeting, I don't blame you for not watching every meeting, quite frankly. But what we, what we've decided, we've have our town attorney looking into a possibility of having a flag policy for the town to make sure that there's no liability for the town. He's going to look at various flag policies that other towns have, as well as the state policy. It's our intention to have a public hearing or public forum that we can discuss this before the special town meeting. You suggested the annual town meeting, might be something the board might want to consider. But the special town meeting, that we, we have this hearing and then we present it to the, the residents of town at the special town meeting in November. And, and they'll get an opportunity to discuss it, question it, and vote on it.
I, I may suggest that instead of a vote at the special or annual town meeting, when we look at our last annual town meeting, we had 72 residents. I think, my belief is, our residents would be more inclined to vote by ballot. I recognize a ballot costs money. I, I understand that. But again, I think this issue is so important that a ballot vote would allow more people to come out and express their views. And I think you'd get a better feel for how people feel about a policy, et cetera. That's why I suggested a ballot vote, because again, the last annual town meeting, 72 people, I don't, didn't do the math, but I think that's around 1% of our, you know, registered voters. I think a ballot vote would be better. Again, it costs money, but I think it's more representative. Thank you.
Yeah, as I had indicated to you, Mr. Perry beforehand, that I did note that you made that comment about 72 residents coming for a, to vote on a $23 million budget for the town. And I, if we put it on a special town meeting or the annual town meeting, we're going to have more than 72 people if we have the flag policy there. So I have helped you as far as that goes anyway. Where's the, I know you saw, I saw your hand.
Actually, it's a question for Mr. Mullin. Mr. Mullin, how much would it cost, what ballot question on the next?
Are we talking about the, are you suggesting, Mr. Perry, that we do this for the annual town elections? Because it really doesn't cost anymore because it would just be written on the ballot.
Well, again, if, let's, let's project that we have a document that has been reviewed by everybody that needs to review it. Legal, residents have had an opportunity. I would suggest that it go on some form of a ballot. Because first of all, I think people would be, A, more inclined to come out because they have anonymity. They don't have to raise their hand in a town meeting.
I like that. People have to show them what they're voting for.
And I think more people would come out and vote on it. And we don't have to worry about packing a hall, do we? You know, we don't have to worry about the fire restrictions, you know, we can do, whatever, whatever time is appropriate to do that, I think the best way to go is a ballot vote, again, whether it's another article on a, you know, a town election, et cetera. I just think people should be given that opportunity. I think more people would vote their mind if it was, A, secret and B, you know, they were given all day to do it.
So there'd be no additional expense?
No, if we did it like as part of an annual town election, oh, yeah, like it, like it would have said, it would essentially be just a regular ballot question on the annual town election ballot.
So who would actually vote to put that on the ballot then? What, is it the Select, almost said Select Board, but the Board of Selectmen, are we, I want to have Mrs. Gula.
Yeah, no, that's, thank you. You saved me.
I agree with what Colonel Perry said, as far as bringing it to the voters, it would not be a policy, it would have to be a bylaw, which would require a public hearing. And I think the election ballot is a good idea because it doesn't cost extra. And I believe that it could be put on there just as you did with the, making the treasurer-collector position appointed, not public. I realized going, changing the name of the Board of Selectmen, there was statutory things, a procedure we had to follow for that whole thing, and that's obviously why that was on there. But the treasurer-collector, that was something that we voted to do because we wanted input from the voters. I think the other thing too is... the other thing, too, is...
Wasn't, excuse me, wasn't it on the warrant of, for this special town meeting? I thought there was also a warrant article to put it on the ballot.
When I said statutory procedures, going back to when I first brought this up, initially you brought it up. We discussed it at the Board of Selectmen. I had said we should take the next steps. We agreed to do that. But we had a series of steps, and it even went to the legislature for special legislation. The governor signed it. That brought it back to the town of Dyton for the ballot vote. So those were all of the steps to change the name of the board. But...
But I thought the treasurer-collector also went before the, at the special town meeting.
I don't remember that one going.
It definitely did.
But it certainly couldn't.
That might have been statutory, too, so.
Well, whatever the process is, well, part of the problem is we don't have a charter. And that's why we had to go home rule petition. So this may very well be home rule petition, follow the procedure. But I think the main important thing is get it on the ballot. Because we saw at the annual election, there were a good total number of votes. Obviously, we didn't get thousands and thousands, but at least we got more than 72, which is town meeting. I think it's very important that in an issue like this, just like those other two issues, you really reach out to the townspeople and say to them, I mean, and we send that out in the mail. Unless they just toss it without even reading it, those ballot questions are in there, and they're really important. And it's a reminder to them that they should be doing that. And they can do it by mail, because it's on the ballot. They don't have to, they don't have to even go to the school to vote. So that, and I would assume we're going to continue with voting by mail. It seems to be popular. So it would definitely be a bylaw. I would not want to ask town council to write it. It's a waste of money, because they got to review it to get it on the warrant. So a committee, for example, if we said the deadline is, the next election's April, so that's roughly, what, six, seven months? And depending upon what the town clerk says, as far as what is the deadline that, to get something on the warrant, to get it printed, and Mrs. Brady's involved with that. But if you said to them, by the first or middle of February, we have to have that, so we can have the public hearing, so that we will have the wording, town council will review it as a bylaw, and it's going to be on the ballot and good to go. So...
The only thing with that, that I recall, was when you initially, everything you said was accurate. It went to the legislature, it came back, it went, and then it went to town meeting.
It was home rule, the whole bit.
Yeah. So it wouldn't even go to a ballot if it didn't pass at town meeting, is my understanding. But the other thing I wanted to mention is, when you first brought up the Select Board thing, I believe you did it at a special town meeting, and the Finance Committee, I remember Chairman Swartz said that that wasn't appropriate, and asked for it to be delayed to the annual town meeting. So I don't know if their position on that has changed. But that's what they say. For big changes like that, they prefer it at the annual town meeting, and that's why that was kicked.
But I think it, I think it did go to the special, because there wasn't...
I thought it went to the special, but the question is, if we don't even have to go to a special town meeting, that we can just put it on the ballot?
Well, again, we got to find out if this, a bylaw, now, this is a bylaw. The other two weren't bylaws, okay? The other thing we did, if you'll remember that special town meeting, there was more than one motion. I had said, let's do it as a non-binding referendum.
Yes, I remember that. Yep.
And that, I believe, got tabled. But then, the moderator, Mr. McKeon, said, wait a minute, there's more to this. There was the other part of that. That's what led it through that whole bit, to get it through the legislature, the governor, and coming back and being on the ballot. Now, what, for example, what Colonel Perry is suggesting is a citizens committee to come up with a bylaw. Bylaws are different from what we voted on, on the ballot. So the question really is, I guess, if we had the bylaw right here tonight, and we were talking about putting things on the warrant, for, in other words, put it in, do we have to take it to the special as a bylaw? Because it could happen. I don't think it would happen this fall, because there isn't enough time. But if the choice is, can we put this on the ballot in April, or does it have to go to town meeting? Town council could tell us, it's a bylaw, therefore, I think the rules are different. We shouldn't have to go to the legislature and all that other stuff.
I agree with you on that.
So the question is, I guess, can a bylaw be on the ballot for the annual town election? Or, the other thing, too, is, the other thing, you could do a secret ballot at a special town meeting, or at the annual town meeting. You have to use those little pieces of paper.
You have to vote, we have, I didn't mean to interrupt.
But this would all be, again, town council would tell you how to do it. So I think the question really is, can you put approval of a bylaw on the annual town election ballot? That would be the question.
Without it going to town meeting, you mean?
So, yeah. So I think, because we weren't talking bylaws before. We were talking about major changes in town government. That's why we had to go that home rule petition and go through the legislature and everything else. So I think this would be handled like a bylaw, except that, instead of just taking it to a town meeting for approval, the question is, can it be put on the ballot in April? And if the answer is no, then the secret ballot at town meeting is the route. Again, you've got to get people to come out.
So the other thing that we should consider, I agree with everything that former Selectman Goulart said, is that there is an advantage, I agree with Colonel Perry, that it probably should go to a ballot. The one advantage to the warrant is, is the warrant mailed, or is that only the annual town meeting? Do we also mail the special town meeting warrant? Okay, so then there is no advantage, yeah.
And the other question is, for a bylaw change, a bylaw at a town meeting, it has to be two-thirds vote, right? So how does that affect an election, you know, if we have it on a ballot? Does it have to be two-thirds?
You'd still need the same majority.
You need two-thirds, then, to...
If it takes two-thirds to pass a bylaw, you'd need a two-thirds vote. Just like if you did it at town meeting with the little papers, you got to have two-thirds of those voting in present in order to pass it. So I think, if there's any way to get it on the election ballot, that would be great, because it really provides anonymity, and people can vote by mail. If we have to go the town meeting route, then, you know, there is a way to do a secret ballot. It's just that you got to get the people to show up to do it.
If town council were to come back and say that what we're talking about isn't possible, because the bylaw would have to first go to a town meeting before it could go on the ballot, is there a way that we could put on the annual town election ballot, something like what you did for the Select Board, having it be non-binding, but just having it be a vote?
You can put non-binding referendums, referendum item, on a town meeting, excuse me, town election. It's got to be clear it is non-binding, just like we did in going to a town meeting. We've done it a couple of times. There was another issue that came up that we did a non-binding on.
Yeah, there was like one or two.
Before, we did the one about the change of the name of the board. But what's really unique is, we're talking election, and we're talking bylaw, as opposed to bylaw and town meeting. So that's where the, that's where the question comes in.
So we need to find out the process. Maybe if we can have that by the August 11 meeting. And we can't vote tonight, because it's not on the agenda to form a committee to come up with this bylaw change. So we can also put that maybe on the August 11, or if we don't have an answer, August 18.
Yes, and I will follow up with Councilman Mr. Chairman. Oh, yeah, like, for like, August 11, we'll try to outline the process.
I have a question, if that's okay. I'm not sure, I don't want to speak for Colonel Perry, but I don't think what he was saying is that we're forming a committee. He wants it to be independent, so I think it wouldn't be us the...
Yes, but I, we have to vote, no, no, no. We have to vote to form a committee. Not that we're going to be on it, but we're going to vote to permit a committee to be formed.
My thought process was, that committee would have to have initially some sort of overarching structure, like you gentlemen, for instance, to provide the environment for that committee to be created, okay? And then, once the committee was created, just set it afloat, if you will, because I don't think there should be any outside influence what that committee discusses, comes up with. I do think, however, that that committee comes up with a proposal, I think it should be discussed within, with you gentlemen, and any other folks that you gentlemen feel appropriate. However, you don't hold sway over that committee.
Can I ask you, if it's okay, or through the chair, you don't mind if I ask you a question? When you said no outside influence, I know you mean town government, but there are also political organizations in town. Are you saying that political organizations should not be on the committee as well, when you talk about independence?
I, my belief is, there are so many outside influences to everything that people try to do at every level of government. And I think it would behoove the members of that committee to take it upon themselves, and take it upon, and use their integrity to listen, but not be influenced. That's a difficult thing to do. I understand that. Listening, you know, is what we all should do. But be influenced, be swayed, et cetera, I think it's going to be a very difficult thing to do, but I think people of integrity can do it. I hope that sort of answered your question.
It does. I think we know who are on these committees. I think the easiest thing would just be to say, nobody that's on a political committee should be on it, because then it becomes a political exercise and not...
Okay. I hadn't thought about it from that perspective, but I agree with that.
Okay. I agree with that. I will agree to the committee under that guise, absolutely. I'm with you 100%.
You know, it's like everything else. You want to create things in a pure form, and never in a pure form. And ultimately, it comes down to, if you set a series of ground rules, or put up a series of fences, and just say, this isn't coming through the fence.
Yeah.
But then it ultimately boils down to the, you know, the ethics and the integrity of the people that would be on that committee.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. I saw Mrs. Goulart's hand go up for us, though.
I saw that agreement with Selectmen Zagrafus and Colonel Perry accept. The Board of Selectmen has to appoint the committee, because if they don't appoint them, it's not a standing committee. It has no role. It has no power, no authority to do anything, period. So there would be applicants, and you'd figure out how many people were going to be on it. You would make the appointments, give them their charge, and then step back. They would eventually be coming back to report to you at an open public meeting. I don't think you can say to anyone, you belong to a public, excuse me, a political committee, or a just cause committee, or a whatever, you can't be there. I think what is important is, you're expecting people who are residents of this town, who want to contribute, to be there and take an honest, open look at whatever it is they're trying to do. Being a member of a political committee doesn't mean that you're only thinking one way, no matter what. It's important that everyone who wants to be within the number of people you're going to set, who want to participate, should. Membership in a political party, or a, I don't know, religious belief, or anything else, should not affect who serves on the committee. What has to be clear is, you, serving on this committee, we expect you to be an independent thinker. We expect you to weigh all the information that's gathered. We expect you to discuss it with your fellow committee members. You're supposed to be acting in the best interests of the town of Dyton to accomplish this task. If you have personal beliefs, regardless of what they're based on, it's not why you're on this committee. You honestly need to be here, acting as a concerned resident who wants to contribute something hopefully beneficial to the town of Dyton. And you're not a political block, and if there happens to be somebody else who is on the same committee with you, or has the same beliefs as you, this is not, we're trying to get a block here and a block there, and, you know, you end up with nothing. So I would not exclude people who belong to political committees personally, but I would make it clear in the charge, you're an independent person. Regardless of what your affiliation is, you're here to study this, and to come back with something concrete that we can present to the residents of the town of Dyton for a vote. So that's how I'd look at it. But I would be very careful to exclude anybody because of a political, religious, or any other kind of affiliation you can think of, okay?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, we're not talking about political beliefs. I'm talking about political organizations. Now, we have heard a lot for the last few months...
Tom, just before you, I had another hand that was up.
We have heard a lot the last few months about perception, right? That this issue has been politicized, right? That we hear it time and time again, right? So it's very important that the committee that govern this process be seen as apolitical and nonpartisan. Would we all agree on that?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay. But what you're talking about is, in a perfect world, this is how it would work, right? Everyone would come in, and we'd have this noble charge, and...
That's not what I said. Absolutely not.
But you're saying everyone should act independent, and it's not blocks. I'm just saying that if it's seen as a political exercise, then it loses the integrity of the intent, which is that it's separate from politics and from the government. So that was, that was why I mentioned what I mentioned.
I think what Colonel Perry said, when I said, well, quite frankly, if I'm the chairman of the some sort or other committee in Dyton, and I have been involved in an issue, and I applied for this, and you said, you know, don't appoint her, because she's involved with the, she's chairman of the whatever, okay? Quite frankly, I would charge discrimination, because I could say to my colleagues and everybody in this town, I can study this issue, I can look at it factually, I am not going to be swayed by being chairman of the whatever committee. That's my concern. No, there's going to be disagreements. The whole point is, there's got to be research, and they've got to act independently. That's what the people in the town are looking for. We're trying to resolve an issue once and for all. We think the bylaw is the route to go. And I think the easiest way to do it is with what Colonel Perry described, is I'll call it the citizens committee for lack of a committee. I don't think it's a problem if you say, town officials can't serve on this committee, as opposed to, as you referenced, political, other than the political part of it, but town officials, not only the Board of Selectmen, other town officials. They can ask you for guidance at times, but you would not be serving another town. Appointing the local officials also would not be on it. I think that's the same thing, because we have other committees that don't have political appointees or officials on.
I think what Dr. Z is saying, though, that he wants this to be an independent committee. For example, I shouldn't be on the committee at all, because I've made my point clear as to what I would support. So I want people who are independent, who are going to look at the whole issue, no matter how they, whatever the result is.
I agree. I agree.
So that's what we'd be looking for.
And I guess the other thing, and I want to hear from Mr. Gulucci, the other thing is that...
Actually, Ron's going to speak next.
If someone is, for example, already putting their opinion, I agree, I shouldn't be on there either. I've made my opinion very clear. Like, are we just going to have a bunch of people who are giving their opinions on it? We already know where they stand. I think the point is that people come in with an open mind, and they come to some kind of independent consensus together, that is independent of us, like, independent of people who have already made their mind on the issue. And that's, that's all I was saying.
Ron.
Ron O'Connor, 594 School Street. Back to the question of ballot, and I wholeheartedly support maximizing the vote. I'm just wondering, is there a reason why we can't put it on the 2022 state election? This precedent for local ballot questions, we're more likely to get close to 3,000 Dyton voters on the state election in 2022. It's only seven months later. This is important enough to get the most people involved and voting.
Well, it's an option. We can look into that also, I would think.
We'll reach out.
So, yeah, like, I have heard that the Secretary of State's office are pretty protective of what they do allow on a state ballot, but I'll reach out, and I'll have that answer.
Yeah, thank you. I just think it's worth it. You get more people than you will with the town election, and certainly more than you'll get in a town meeting. But I for one say, we should get as many people as possible engaged in this. A lot of the time, if we can get it on the state ballot, we're going to get close to 3,000 people, I think.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tom?
We all know my feelings on this. I'm not going to berate you with those anymore. But kind of in agreement with the ballot, the ballot idea. And I also think it would be probably the cheapest solution. We can certainly get out the vote and so forth. Where I'm in disagreement is with what you said, Mr. Zagrafus, which is the idea that we would exclude political committees and members. You have a finite group of people in town from both sides of the aisle who are involved. And to exclude people of one party or another would be, as Mrs. Goulart said, it would be discriminatory. So we can't have that either. So I would be... So I, I would be remiss if I didn't defend the members of my committee who wanted to serve on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would be looking for a balanced committee.
I just want to be clear. I clearly did not have the thought, all the way thought out. We cannot just say you're registered. I, I know that. I'm clearly well aware. But I totally take that point and I agree.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Perry had his hand up first.
Yeah, I, I agree with Ms. Gulat. My intent was for independent thinkers, not to exclude anyone, certainly not at all, but independent thinkers that are going to leave whatever baggage they have at the door when they come into the meeting, you know? But that was my intent and I agree with what you're saying, Mr. Gulat.
Mrs. Gulat.
I hope this is my final call.
You know, I don't have a jingle.
Oh, they took it away.
I think they took it away from getting the stone wall.
She's hiding it. She knew.
I think I threatened somebody. The other thing we've got to remember, it's going to be a bylaw. Bylaws are obstruction. So I assume research is going to be contact whoever out there. Does anybody have a bylaw or a policy or whatever? A bylaw is much stricter than a policy. And therefore, it's going to follow what kind of language a bylaw does. By the same token, there can be regulations attached to a bylaw. So it's a storm wall. So the bylaw, if we get the bylaw worded and voted, if down the road, there need to be regulations, regulations can be written. They receive local approval. They don't have to go to a town meeting. But the main thing is, this is not going to be a free for all, everybody that's got a thought, oh, they'll just stick it in me. That's how, that's not how bylaws are written. So that's the other thing. The, the actual format for a bylaw is what our attorney is going to look at. And if it's truly a regulation, they're going to say this doesn't meet the requirements of a bylaw. So that's the other thing. There is going to be like a box that you must put this thing into for the proper format, you know, and what.
Can we stop the conversation, please? Thank you. So, Mr. Mullin, I've asked the town council to look into this. Perhaps we should hold off on that. Let the committee, once, if we form a committee, to take a look at it. They can check other towns in the state and whatever the policies are and they, obviously they're going to come back to us with something. But rather than have the expense of the town council looking into it.
So yeah, like if I could though, oh, you, oh, you know, like if, oh, like if I could reach out, I can confirm with him, oh, you know, like an outline of the process that we're visiting and going, like actually hypothetically to, like either the April 22 town election or the November 22 state election. Oh, yeah, I can, I like an ascent, and essentially confirm that a ballot, oh, oh, yeah, like a question on either one of those ballots would actually work for the purpose we're discussing.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Anybody else for public input?
I think that's great.
Anybody on Zoom? Public input? I can't see the names. Still can't see the names.
So I don't see any hands? I don't see any hands. There's six people. Excuse me, if you have public input, can you unmute yourself and just state your name and address?
I don't think anybody, no. So the next agenda item is announcements. If Dr. Z, if you could read the announcements, please.
Sure. Town of Dayton public buildings are open to the public. The library is closed to the public, but continues to offer curbside service. The 42nd Pan Mass Challenge will pass through Dayton on Saturday, August 7th. Please support your friends with a donation at this annual event, which represents over 64% of the Jimmy Fund's annual revenue. The Town of Dayton Food Bank Distribution will be held next on August 21st, 2021, located at the Town Hall, 979 Somerset Avenue, lower level, as a drive-through.
Could you just hold on for a second? The last one wasn't a drive-through, so the one in August, the food bank, it won't be a drive-through also.
It's just regular.
Unless they pay the strike, we, we are going inside.
Okay, strike the drive-through. It will just be in the lower level. Thank you, Mr. Ferry. Reminder, license your dogs, it's the law. Leash your dogs for everyone's safety. All dogs six months of age or older must be licensed yearly beginning January 1st. All dogs must be restrained by a leash or chain when on any street or public place in town. If you have any questions, please call the town clerk's office at 508-669-5411, option two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item, Mr. Town Administrator's report.
Yes, and thank you, Chair. I do have a few updates. The first one is, um, is about the reopening of Council on Aging in Primetime. Like when we spoke, um, and I provided an update, I believe, at the end of June, um, I had mentioned at the time that the Highway Department was going to be working, oh, you know, like and bring everything from the Council on Aging at Primetime back to this, but, um, at the Housing Authority. Um, and the Highway, oh, like in our Highway Crew, they've been busy doing, oh, like a whole bunch of everything lately. They've been doing an incredible job. Um, and they had, oh, you know, they haven't actually got there yet, but they're anticipating about a mid, oh, you know, August, actually, uh, like actually taking everything back to the Housing Authority. Um, about Primetime, we had a really good reopening task force meeting last week. Like we actually had the deputy, so the Deputy Secretary of the Executive Office of Elder Affairs actually joined us by phone as well, uh, you know, and participated and weighed in with her input and, oh, you know, like essentially, oh, oh, you know, like essentially she did say it was a local decision. Oh, you know, like, oh, and as part of the conversation with Ms. Housen, oh, you know, like with Chairman Ferry, we did decide, oh, you know, based on the unknowns of the Delta variant, oh, to hold off another month and revisit it, uh, like in mid-September, the, uh, the reopening of Primetime. And that would give us with, um, actually our new town accountant, actually, oh, you know, like actually coming, like actually coming on board as well, like more time to really look at the finances and the funding as well. Uh, so that is an update on that. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Can I ask him a question about that before he moves on?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Administrator. I thought that we were going to have like a, a conversation all together with the Primetime personnel, like executive director, and then have a conversation about the finances, like together before we opened up?
Yeah, I think that's what you're-
Yeah, like in this will really-
We want the town accountant to be present and be able to look at, and she's starting August 2nd, to look at what-
Oh, yeah, like in another month will really give us the opportunity to do that, is what I meant.
Okay. I thought you had said that it was opening up in September, so I-
Uh, no, no, like we're like awaiting actually a decision until September because of the unknowns on the Delta variant.
Sorry.
And a lot of it does depend on the Delta variant and-
Yeah, that is an unknown as heck right now.
Numbers are going up and as we go inside, it's going to get worse. Do you have your-
Yes, I, I just want to clarify that because I was under the impression as Chairman Ken would be representing us. So you're, you're advocating that all three of us be a part of that discussion?
I ju, I think I just used the "we" as like a general-
You spent some time in France, so that whole "we" thing is-
Well, no, I wasn't, I was under the assumption that as the chairman, he would be representing us.
I just want the conversation to happen before-
Okay.
We open that.
Right, and we'll be making a decision on that. We'll have all the information, whether I represent us at the meeting and then everything will be brought back to the board so we can all look at the figures.
Uh, yeah, that is, oh, yeah, all of that is on the radar and is part of the plan at this point.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to the library. So, uh, uh, like actually later in the agenda, we have a draft agreement for your consideration with Aries Building Systems. Uh, like we, uh, like we finished, uh, we finished, uh, we finished the procurement on the modular trailer process. Uh, like, uh, uh, I'm, I'm, and I could, based on that, we have for your approval, a brand new modular unit that, uh, that hopefully will be here within two to three weeks from now. Oh, you know, like in that, oh, you know, oh, like, oh, like, oh, like, oh, like, and that will allow us really to meet the Labor Day deadline. Oh, you know, like, oh, like, and as we're talking, like in this week, actually, our Highway Department, oh, it has been out on the Briggs property with the Water Department, um, and actually with the Sewer Department as well, making sure all the hookups are in place. Uh, so like, and we do expect and, uh, have been working with the Library Director, working with the trustees as well. Oh, you know, like, oh, and especially, oh, like, and especially over the next few weeks, we'll, oh, like, actually have everyone, keep bringing everyone together and make sure. Oh, you know, we have a plan at this point to, uh, oh, you know, like actually talking with the Library Director about the use of the lower conference room at Town Hall, too. Oh, like, oh, like, oh, and essentially they were part of the operation, the trailer. Oh, like, oh, like, and then I think the children's room in the lower Town Hall Conference Room.
So I do have a question. It's probably more directed towards Jimmy Aguirre. Once the library has the new ramp and the bathrooms are ADA, are we planning to use that, the Andrew Carnegie Building, as part of the library?
Yeah. Hello, everyone. Jimmy Aguirre. Yeah, the main level of the library can be used. Uh, we haven't discussed lately when that will happen because we're still going for engineering right now. But the, the option to use that main level, yes, will be, will be available. The lower level, however, will never be occupied again. The upper level, obviously, is just storage, so. The only point I want to make, and I, I've had some very good discussions with Johnson, the librarian. The, right now, the lower level Town Hall is on the table for use by them because obviously they're going to have their facility over on this complex. Um, I just, I want to make sure that we're conscious of the fact that there seems to be scheduling conflicts here in this room right now and not informing more committees, which I think is justified. I don't want to take the lower level meeting room away, although I'm trying my best to accommodate Johnson in every way I can. And then, uh, as not as a meeting space, um, or an optional meeting space.
Do you mind if I ask who meets down there? Is it the zoning board and conservation?
Yes. Down there, so, and then-
So they would be forced, okay, I'm just trying to picture it all in my head.
And it may be okay. It may work out. I just, I, I know that Karen fortunately has been the recipient of some conflicts in scheduling and we have to move things around. I just don't want to create a quagmire where we're all shuffled and trying to find meeting space for someone. So I just want to keep that in mind. Um, and I'm going to have more discussion with Johnson about that.
The only thing is their meetings are like the third Wednesday at 7:00. So what time does the library stop?
Well, here's the issue. The library actually wants to use the space, but they actually want it for some books.
Oh, okay, okay, they want to-
So that's in effect how people can sit in that space. Now, if it's a modified space and we just have a lower occupancy, that may work. But these are the discussions that we need to, to have over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, that makes sense.
I attended a park and rec meeting Monday that was held at the North Dayton Playground. Do meetings have to be held on this complex? Do they have to be held on town property?
No, they don't, but the ZBA has hearings and stuff like that, so I would think that they would want to have a, uh, a, a meeting in one of our facilities.
Are you suggesting they have it at the North Dayton?
No, no, I'm not suggesting. I'm just saying if they came up with an alternative site that they were comfortable with.
Public has, have access to it though, so.
And where would the- Oh, sorry, but- No, it's okay. I just wanted to know, what would be the location of the modular unit? I'm sorry, I should have asked this a while back.
So it's on, it's on this complex. We were originally going to put it on the other property where the building was demolished. We actually have decided to put the parking area for the library on the 949 property. And the modular itself, we located right at the property line between this, between this complex and that property. So much thought has gone into this, both logistically, accessibility, access to infrastructure, which we need electric, water, and sewer. So, yeah, we, we've really put our minds to it. So it seems to be the best place.
We're not going to take down the stone wall that separates those properties.
No, right, but there is a small portion of the stone wall that's defunct. Um, so we may just make a walkway between the two complexes, which I think is beneficial for pedestrian traffic. But whatever we do, we'll be mindful of not taking the wall down. Yes.
Any other questions about the library?
Uh, can then if I, so then if I, I just want to like share my screen because we do have an update on the drop boxes and I want to thank Highway Superintendent Ferry, Mr. Aguirre as well, uh, like for their efforts over the last few weeks. Uh, like we do have the drop box, uh, actually, I, actually our drop boxes, they've been ready, sorry, um, on the, I'm at the lower level, I'm at the lower level of Town Hall for the past few weeks. Um, and now we have the sign and we have, oh, you have to kick, oh, you have to kick everything off with the implementation. Uh, like, uh, actually our picture here is where the drop box used to be. And then as, uh, and then as we go down, uh, when folks are actually driving into the Town Hall entrance, uh, like, uh, they, uh, they will see the sign alerting everybody that the drop boxes are now on with your lower level behind Town Hall. Well, and then when we get to up behind Town Hall, we have another, our pointing to the boxes as well. And then here, uh, the box is in full living color. So I just really wanted to share with the public where we are going now. Uh, like, and we'll be getting this out on social media, um, and on Channel 9 as well, so we all, uh, and everyone has, uh, like, an, an understanding that now we have two boxes. Uh, one is for the town clerk's office, the ballots, uh, for licensing, for census forms. Um, uh, like in the white box is for the treasure, um, is for the treasure or collector's office, like for bills. Um, uh, like for checks and for tax payments and so forth. Like, so like I just wanted to share that with the board and with the general public, Mr. Chairman, that we're ready to load those out.
So the previous slide, I'm a little concerned about where that sign is. That seems like it's in the handicapped area and that's where, for people who are in, the other, go one down.
Yes.
It's where people unload from a van or whatever, so I'm just concerned about where that sign's located. Because he's handicapped parking on both sides, I believe, right? There's, we can see one spot and then there's another one on the other side of it.
I think there's only one.
Yeah, it's actually part of the walkway. It's part of, uh, oh, yeah, oh, it's part of, I believe, probably like a 10-foot or so walkway in the middle, Mr. Ferry.
Yes, that's more than 10 feet from each handicap spot. That's right in front of the doors, right directly in front of the doors. Little handicap parking there.
So where you see the reversal in the stripes, that's actually-
It's the walkway?
The walkway itself. The van space that you referenced is on the other side with a, with a stripe reversed in the other direction. And then we have that same thing on the other side. So that area was hashed out just because I didn't want people parking right in front of the doors. That way their whole area was left open, so.
Thank you. Selectman Hall.
Be guiding the two boxes.
Yes.
Are there any designations or braille writing so that people that have-
Yes.
Sight impairment can figure out which is which.
So, yes, and that's a really good question. We are, are also working with the ADA coordinator and here, oh, and he's actually working on having pockets made and printed so we can adhere them to the boxes.
Thank you.
Now, are there supposed to be two boxes over here also or not? Just that, there's a box there now, but-
Right. That box there is just for planned drop-offs for the building and health department. That's all that box is designated for. So there was never any discussion about having a separate set of boxes here.
We just have to be careful if we have an election that people aren't putting their ballots in that box. So that'll have to be checked. I don't know how often it's checked, but-
We didn't see any last time, but, uh, you know, maybe we can put a sign on it that we're just, uh, just a date as such.
Gulat.
Where's the general mailbox? For anyone else in the Town Hall, we have one box. One person took all the mail and distributed it. For example, I regularly left stuff for the Board of Selectmen's Office there or sometimes for the Board of Health. There are people that have other forms of correspondence other than bills and election-related items that they would leave in the box. There are people that have other forms of correspondence other than bills and election-related items that they would leave in the box. And it was just a matter of opening it up and parceling out the mail.
The black box, right?
So where do you want people to drop mail when Town Hall is closed, other than treasure collector clerk? That's what we did with the other box.
Mm-hmm. I never, uh, I honestly never gave that any thought. I don't know how often it's, I know I put my taxes, taxes in there.
I raised the issue when they talked about doing it because I said, first of all, there would be public that says they're too lazy to open the box and distribute it, now we gotta sort their mail for them. And I made this clear to the town clerk and the treasurer, and the treasurer collector, who told me she wasn't involved in the decision. That's another issue. But the fact of the matter is.
She actually was.
On a regular basis, I have left mail in the box, will continue to do so. But I would hope that when somebody sees an envelope with a name on it, whether it's the town administrator or the board or whoever's located in that building, who, wherever I put it, somebody's gonna make sure they get it.
I'm sure that's gonna happen. Mr. Hall.
Now, Mr. Aguirre, you said there's a third box that is up here, correct?
It's here at this building.
So could we make that more inclusive?
That's fine, if, if that's what the, uh, selectmen so choose, I don't have an issue with that.
The only issue is, how does that mail get over there?
Exactly.
That's the problem. Somebody's. That's why we couldn't have the clerk and the treasurer's box over here.
So we, so we visit Town Hall every morning, uh, to retrieve our mail from the mailboxes. So if that's what was to happen, we would have no problem bringing over the mail. We still today have things dropped off for our building next door, so we, we work sort of interoffice, sort of cohesively, so. If, if a general mailbox is, is needed and warranted, then I have no problem making a general mailbox here.
Well, what happened to the box that we did have over there?
We still have it.
That's a possibility using that box. I don't know where we'd locate it in relation to the other two.
Well, that box is not accessible, so we would have to replace that box. So if that's what the board so chooses, we can replace this box with a necessity box and make it the general mailbox as well as mail for this program.
Mr. Chairman, my other thought is, my point of those boxes and all of the town departments located here.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
It, because if we have a third box, is it a third person? Now we've got two people unloading boxes instead of one. If we put in another box.
But they had asked for that, though. They wanted, they wanted to separate the ballot, like, the town.
I understand that, but quite frankly, I understand the treasurer collector because a lot of people pay their taxes, though we, we'll see them shortly because August first, the taxes are due. And people come by all hours of day and night because it's secure. They're driving by, they throw the thing in there with the check and all that. But the town clerk, in effect, that's who we've designated as the, if you will, the information office or the town office. It would seem appropriate that that box says, and all general mail for other departments in this building. They're gonna be able to pull out their ballots because they're special envelopes and other kinds of things. And whatever is left, whether it's for the selectmen's office or the assessors' office or anybody else, when they empty that, that will be the general one as opposed to. Personally, we only have elections, well, except for two thousand twelve, when we, I think we had one a month, but two months apart, we don't have tons and tons of ballots repeatedly. It's at certain times and then it ends. Whereas the treasurer collector, at a minimum, is four times a year. And, and as we all know, it's tax payments and things of that nature. So maybe the clerk's box could say, and mail for other, all of the departments located in this building. This building meaning that Town Hall over there, because I've also used the one here when I want to drop stuff for the Board of Health. Uh, so that, you know, they don't have to go next door. But, but maybe the clerk's office is the place to add that.
Well, I would want to run that by the town clerk, but also, if we're in the process of having this put in braille, then we may have to have some changes in that also, so I'm not sure how far.
I was just gonna say, I hope Mr. Gale hasn't ordered those brackets.
So, yes, 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 if, if, yeah, yes, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I can have a conversation with the town clerk. And I'll also reach out to Mr. Gale about the braille, about the braille package as well, and I'll see if we can come to a consensus on all this.
Thank you.
So in the meantime, I will use the town clerk's box.
Yeah, but I would put my taxes in the collector's.
I'll put my taxes in the right box, yes.
You know what the funniest part of this all is? They're gonna put the mail wherever they want anyway. Like, it doesn't matter.
We're trying to.
Like, we all agree on that.
We're trying to get a little.
And it will get to where it needs to go, just like it always has.
Yes, yes, right.
We're just gonna give Mike a few more gray hairs on, on our way to the solution.
I don't have any here, but. I'll, if I could, so we're going, as I'm talking about mailboxes, uh, to two point three million dollars in federal ARPA funding. Um, um, and on the fifth, um, and on the fifteenth, uh, and on the fifteenth of this month, uh, Selectman Hall and I, we attended a meeting, uh, like, actually, out back at the Aggie, uh, like, held by the Bristol County Commissioners. Uh, and as we know, they've accepted, along with the other existing county governments, uh, like, they have accepted the responsibility of administering the, um, actually, the hundred and, the hundred and ten million dollars of funding coming to Bristol County communities. Uh, and there was, I believe, almost every Bristol County city and town representative at the meeting. Oh, you know, like, and one of the key questions that the commissioners wanted, uh, like, uh, oh, you know, like, actually answered by our towns, uh, like, is that, um, um, at the beginning of May, I believe, the federal and state government, they, um, actually outlined the amount of funding that would be eligible to city and towns based on a per capita basis. Uh, like, and for the county level, uh, like, I believe on a per capita basis, the formula was actually around, um, a hundred and, I believe, a hundred and ninety-four dollars per person. Um, and a hundred and ninety-four dollars per person, uh, uh, like, actually times eight, uh, like, around, around eight thousand residents, um, is one point, is roughly one point five million dollars. Um, and the, um, and at the time, and at the time, the county commissioners wanted to, uh, like, actually hear from everyone whether we thought, oh, you know, the county, oh, you know, like, actually, our county commissioner should administer based on that. Oh, you know, like, or based on another, like, needs-based, oh, you know, whole analysis or component. Oh, you know, like, in understanding government, I'm recommending, and it was the consensus, like, of actually every city and town in the realm that the per capita formula would mean. Uh, like, and I just, I'm actually, like, included in the packet as a draft letter really outlining that, so. Uh, like, as we move forward and planning out, uh, like, exactly how we're spending, uh, and how we hope to spend, uh, like, our eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars that we've received directly from the feds. Oh, you know, and then in, and then in addition to that, the, uh, the approximately one point five million dollars, oh, you know, like, oh, actually eligible, actually eligible to Dyton act, oh, you know, like, as part of the county, we could plan on that based on that formula. Oh, you know, and not having to go through, oh, you know, any other government or, oh, you know, oh, like, oh, like, any, oh, like, any other type of needs-based basis where we are up against, uh, like, the city of Far River, Uno Bedford, uh, like, Fairhaven or everywhere else. We can really use that funding and control our destiny. So, uh, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, like, that is really the update, um, on the meeting. Um, and the commissioners actually hope to, um, around Labor Day announce, uh, you know, essentially what their process is gonna be, uh, like, and, uh, like, and how we can work with them to move forward. But I just thought, because, uh, like, on the fifteenth, I really didn't have a sense of how the board felt. Oh, you know, like, I, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, I, oh, you know, like, I wanted to provide an update in a sense of my recommendation to the board.
Slackman Hall.
That makes sense.
Yep, Slackman Hall.
Once money comes in.
Mm-hmm.
What will be the process that we will use to determine who gets it?
Do they also, and so that's very important, and I also would love to know the answer to that, but also, another important question is, were there, was there guidance on what it can be used for? Because I think that would help us determine.
It was guidance.
It was.
So, yeah, like, if water sewer broadband, we can use it for some public health and safety, uh, issues as well, or investments as well. Uh, like, we, uh, we can also help fill the gaps with any lost revenues, uh, that have occurred from the pandemic. Um, yeah, like, those are about, oh, you know, like, all the eligible uses right now, but everything and all the guidance is evolving by the day. Uh, like, uh, and that's coming from the US, uh, like, actually, our US Treasury, uh, like, in all, and also from the Executive Office of Administration and Finance. A lot of towns really don't, oh, you know, have any tried and true plans now. They're trying to get a sense of exactly how all this, oh, uh, like, exactly how all the funding is coming through, through the towns. Oh, yeah, oh, like, and there was a quote actually by one town administrator, um, I believe he was from Mattapoiset the other day, that they were really in no hurry, oh, you know, to come up with, uh, any, you know, ideas, because essentially we have until, um, I believe, twenty twenty-six in order to spend it. So we have a little bit of time. Oh, you know, like, in my opinion, like, it gives us a little time to flesh out those plans as well.
Does infrastructure count at all?
Oh, yes, absolutely, water sewer infrastructure.
As long as it falls under the, those broad umbrellas, right? Pub, you said, safe, public health, public safety.
Yes, and water sewer and broadband infrastructure.
And this is separate, I apologize, I'm done after this. This is separate from the money, I promise. This is separate from the monies that Congressman Auchincloss set aside.
Yes.
And that we will be using to partner with the Water District, correct?
Uh, those, uh, those funds we applied for, but we don't have any guarantee that we're going to receive them. What the Water District actually did receive, uh, like, I believe is, I believe is a very low interest loan to, uh, for the upgrade of Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, like, additionally, however, we did work with the Water District to apply for, um, I believe, uh, uh, like, I believe, I believe, a two million out of the four million dollars in funding through the congressman. Uh, like, I don't have a lot of high hopes for that. Oh, yeah, oh, like, I, oh, you know, like, I think in reading, actually, there was an article, uh, in the Sun Chronicle a few weeks ago that the congressman, uh, like, had outlined priorities in Taunton and Attleboro. Uh, like, and I just, I mean, now such, I don't have a lot of, uh, high hopes. Oh, you know, either the town or the Water District is gonna get that funding.
I just would hate if we, if we use some of this, um, I shouldn't say hate, because the water upgrades, I want to be very clear, need to happen. But what, uh, if we were to use some of the one point five or one point eight million in ARPA funding and then find out that we were to get the other money, you know, I guess we could still use it for another purpose, but, um, anyway, we all agree the water's, infrastructure upgrades need to happen, so.
Yes. So has everybody had an opportunity, opportunity to look at the letter that we're gonna send to the commissioners?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
If there's no questions about that, I'll entertain a motion that we send that letter.
So.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. So we should sign that letter tonight?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thankfully, Mr. Chairman, those are all my updates.
Thank you. There's no rural business, uh, selectmen's reports and comments are just, for me, I just want to give an update under COVID. Uh, numbers are going up again, of course. Uh, so from seventeen, uh, July twelfth to July eighteenth, we've had five new cases. We've had no additional deaths, and from seven nineteen to seven twenty-five, we've had four additional cases. Fifty-one percent, thank you, residents of, uh, Dyton, fifty-one percent of us are, uh, fully vaccinated. In the age group, for the, uh, those that have had, uh, for the past weekend, that got COVID, there's been two from the ages zero to nineteen, and there's been two from twenty to twenty-nine. So now it seems to be impacting, uh, unfortunately impacting, uh, younger people, so we just encourage people to, uh, get vaccinated. This is the only way we're gonna beat this and only way we're gonna be able to open up everything. Because I'm afraid that we're gonna be, one of the future meetings, we're gonna be wearing masks again in here, unfortunately. That's my report. Is there any other selectmen's report, uh, Selectman Hall?
Uh, yes, this is from Park and Recreation Commission. This past Monday, the Park and Recreation Commission met at the North Dyton Playground. Chairman Kevin Smith, uh, Clerk Susan Cody, and Member Dave Rosa were present. The commission appointed David Rosa as the Park and Rec, uh, Representative to the Community Preservation Commission. They also rescinded the restriction on the use of roller blades at the street hockey court on Route one thirty-eight. Roller blades, it should be stressed, will only be allowed on the street hockey court. They will not be allowed on the tennis courts or the basketball court. Most of the meeting centered on the development of a plan for the upgrading of the ball field and playground in North Dyton. And some of the goals of the commission were to keep the current ball field with upgrades. To move equipment from behind the field to the front, and I know from talking to Nubata, um, he will be delighted to have that happen because with the equipment, it currently is, uh, is right near his property, so. Uh, also, they will be installing new playground equipment that will be accessible to all. It will not only be ADA compliant, but it will be, um, usable for different, all different age groups. And also, the installation of a park and lot is their goal. They will be forming a study committee to begin work on a site plan for a presentation to the public as the first of several meetings to garner public input and support on the direction this project should take. And they will be working with Mr. Mullin and the Board of Selectmen for assistance in obtaining seed money. They also want to stress that they will be looking for grants as well. They're a relatively young committee, um, and any help that we could give, especially in the grant writing department, they would appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, I just have, uh, two quick things. Um, first of all, when I spoke to, um, Mr. Smith from Parks and Rec, and he told me that they moved the equipment to the front, I was excited, not because I live over there, I do not, but because part of the reason I think we had issues with the equipment breaking or being broken by people before was because it was hidden in the back. Um, and so bringing it to the front, I think, is, is good, it sounds like, for everybody, even the, um, local people in the area. The other thing I wanted to mention, and it's just in its infancy, so I don't want to say too much, was, um, I did have a discussion with, um, Highway Superintendent Tom Ferry, Building Commissioner, uh, Jim Aguirre, Town Administrator Mike Mullin, and also Kevin Smith from the Parks and Recreation, as well as, um, ADA Coordinator Jonathan Gale, to begin discussing, um, the Massachusetts Office of Disabilities Grants, um, and getting, uh, more funding for things, um, that it seems like we all are on the same page, that we want to do in order to bring our town, um, more into ADA compliance, but also remove accessibility barriers. So that was a good discussion, um, and those discussions will continue. But everybody was on the same page, everybody was, um, freely sharing ideas, um, able to speak freely, throw any ideas out there on the table. And I thought it was really productive, and I, I think we're gonna, we have a good shot, so. Um, and I just wanted to thank everyone for, uh, helping.
Good to know.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, new business, a review, discuss an active replacement of American flags on Somerset Avenue, telephone poles. I, uh, attended a conservation, uh, meeting at a solar farm on Brook Street, corner of Brook and Pine. And Mrs. Goulart, obviously, uh, was present for, uh, representing Stonewater. And we had a discussion about the American flags that we've had in the past on Somerset Avenue that we, we've done. Uh, I'm not sure if we, did we do it last year? Do you remember it because of COVID? No. So we've had a discussion that we should continue doing that.
Yeah.
But we wanted input from, uh, Mr. Ferry, Mr. Edens, that put the flags up. I don't know what the shape of the flags are right now. And there was a discussion, at least between Mrs. Goulart and myself, that the flagpoles be metal and not wood.
I would, I would totally agree.
They've broken in the past, so I don't know.
Is that possible to have them be, why are you looking at me?
Yeah, I don't want them to be spears either.
To have them be metal?
So I, I know where this discussion was going, that, um, I don't know, because the last time we put them up, it was fifteen flags. Most of the poles were damaged, some of the flags were damaged because of some shop losses in the poles that we need to deal with. And poles went to kind of really speed, spent freely, the worry free type. And poles went to kind of really speed, spent freely, the worry free type pole.
Okay.
Uh, so, so entertaining change in the type of pole is important. Uh, but that was also a trial run. We want just that, or do we want an entertaining annual from the Berkeley Graves to passing school entrance that we talked about before also?
I, I would be.
And also, how is this gonna be for?
Well, we thought you brought the checkbook.
Why are you asking us?
We just assumed you guys would, uh, my interest is what we've done in the past, that we do it from, uh, Senate Street to, uh, Stonegate, I believe it is, fifteen, uh, fifteen poles, that they should be metal. I, I'm sure some of the flags are not in good shape, so we, we should do that. And I thought we kept them up, and Mrs. Goulart corrected me on it, but I thought we kept them up until Labor Day, but we actually keep them up until Veterans Day.
It was Veterans Day, to Veterans Day, yeah.
So.
But they didn't go back up, because again, the thing, the, um, I think some of the sticks broke, and Miss, as Mr. Ferry had stated, but I agree with you, I'm, as long, if they can be metal, that's great. Let's do our trial run redoing them where they already were with different type of stake. Um, and then if they work, right, if we don't have to keep replacing them every year, then we can think about extending it down, because I think it would look beautiful, um, and I'm all for it. I just don't wanna have to keep replacing, you know, and then he has to go out and then buy, get new ones, I, I assume.
Mrs. Goulart has suggested that we have metal poles, so, I mean.
I'll support that, yep.
I know that when I first contacted Somerset, uh, when Mr. Ferry and I talked about this way back when, uh, they used the metal poles, and they seem to be there all the time.
Yep.
And, uh, and as he said, this was a trial run. So we are gonna have to replace flags, because obviously it leaves well from May to November, they're gonna fade and, and get rid. But also, besides the, the wear and tear, we had a hurricane, as I remember. Um, and I think that caused a lot of those wooden poles to snap. But, uh, you know, I've seen it everywhere, even in Maine. I mean, out in the middle of, like, nowhere, root, different routes, not in the city per se, but I've seen the metal poles, and they seem to, they seem to last, so.
Rainham does ones that go, I'm not suggest, please know I'm not suggesting this, but they have ones, they line, like, the whole town square. Uh, you've seen it too, right? And they're on their own poles, like, they must have gotten permission from people to put them in the front of their yards. It looks really cool, but I agree, um, the metal poles.
The ones that have, I'll call them anchors in the sidewalk, I don't know what else you call them, but, that, that you put in there. But, uh, when the Berkeley Dyton Bridge Project was underway, and they replaced all those poles, and they're all on the south side, and took down all the trees, Mr. Ferry and I had said, that would be gorgeous to see those flags, because there'd be nothing to block them.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe down the road, that's something we could consider.
So my question then, yep, Mr. Ferry?
Last year, you know, we had some replacements we considered. That definitely was not an essential spending, spending fees last year, so, a good reason to. But roughly, if those poles match our base, it's gonna be just under a thousand replacement, the holes in the flags.
So my next question is, do we have that in the Board of Selectmen's budget?
Yeah, P and T maybe?
So we'd have, uh, what I'd recommend, like, if possible, like, if I could spend the next two weeks or so working with Mr. Ferry, like, in trying, uh, you know, to come up with ways that we can fund it, and then we can bring it back to the board, uh, either at the meeting on the eleventh or the eighteenth.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
But it sounds like it's.
He's trying to say like one.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm coming to your defense here. I'm coming to your defense. But it sounds like this isn't gonna be, it, I guess it could be near whatever threshold we, but I thought highway was three thousand, so why can't we just, why can't we just vote? Because we obviously, I think, are all in agreement that we want the flags on the poles, and then you guys can figure out the spending, because the request, I think, has to come to you anyway. Like, why does it have to come back to us?
I know, and if we're using the three thousand dollars for highway, I take, I understand that it's actually coming out of the highway budget, so I'm great with that.
No.
Yeah, but in seriousness, I don't disagree. I think that's a fine plan.
I'd like to see the flag sooner than later, so.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Selectman Hall, you had your hand up.
Listening to this discussion, this is something we do every year, correct?
We actually, I think we did it one year, right?
Yeah, and then the pandemic, so we didn't get to do it the second year.
Did it twenty nineteen.
So if we're planning on doing it every year, why isn't it just part of Mr. Ferry's budget on a regular basis? So we don't have to debate how we're paying for this in the future.
Well, it could be, it's just that. Didn't come to budget time.
Because it wasn't done the year prior, because of the pandemic, but to your point, a hundred percent, absolutely, and I'll support that. Unless he wants to come back to us, but I doubt that he does.
So are you suggesting then that we, uh, vote to approve, uh, the, uh, payment of the flags from the highway department?
No, from somewhere within our budget.
So, in our budget?
Yeah, the Board of Selectmen, yeah. For this year, correct. Good, good, that's like, are you entertaining motions?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm gonna land the plane. So, Chairman Pacheco, I motion that we approve the placement of American flags on Somerset Avenue telephone poles and all corresponding expenditures, provided that they are run by, uh, the town administrator, who will work on the financing with, uh, the highway superintendent, where exactly it'll come from. That was a long motion, I'm sorry.
I liked that, though, it was non-committal.
Yes.
Could you repeat it?
No. But it'll come from the Board of Selectmen's budget.
You second it, uh, Selectman Hall? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
And thank you, um, Selectman Goulart. I, my understanding is you brought this back, um, and I appreciate it. It was a good idea the first year you did it, and it's still a good idea, and I do hope that we do it every year after this.
Well, actually, it was Select, it was Selectman Pacheco who mentioned it to me, and I said, that's okay, bring it up at the Selectmen's meeting, because Tommy's gonna say she did it anyhow, so. Because I had said it before, we gotta do this, and then, of course, COVID came, and, you know, everything changed, but.
Yes, I, I saw, I, I don't normally allow, uh, public input until we have public input, but I'm gonna allow, because I know you're on the agenda also, Mr. Spellman. So if you wish to speak?
Sure, just speaking of the flags, certainly very important to me, uh, being a citizen of the country and a taxpayer of the town. I'd like to make a donation to take and put the flags up from the bridge to the school. It's something we can do in a sense of finishing the whole project.
Are you looking at him for the okay?
Can I ask, Mr. Spellman, are you, are you gonna do the whole thing, or just the part that the town wouldn't do, like?
I'm talking about the part that we're talking about doing in the future, from the bridge up through the school.
The bridge to one thirty-eight, it would actually be.
If that's permissible by law, I have no issue with that.
It's, it's not, it's not the law, or I just called, um, National Grid when, and Verizon, and she, my contact said, just do it.
Okay.
Because that's basically what Somerset did.
I have no issue with that, Mr. Chairman.
I don't either, and when I saw him raise his hand, I, I almost said I would have got myself in trouble. Are you planning on donating some flags to the town? So I think I kinda read his mind, I kept quiet, but I appreciate that.
Build the project and tie it in together.
That's fabulous, thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. It's nice to have, uh, businesses in town donate to help the, the town.
Does that mean we can move them up on the agenda, so we don't have to stay here for another two hours?
Make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we move, uh, Agenda Item eleven J out of order.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Only thing I wanna say is now we're gonna go through all this to, to get to it. If there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. So I understand, uh, you want a, uh, a liquor license, uh, for two of the days for your auction on your classic cars, is that, uh, correct?
All right, turn this over to Fred Gelsarow, he's our general manager. Fred, want to select a presentation?
Come up to the podium, and you can identify yourself.
So I believe you gentlemen have our application and all the corresponding documentation we're required to send.
I hope to get to it soon.
And we're just asking if you have any questions or any concerns that we can answer while we're here.
Well, I did wanna, uh, make sure that whoever's going to, uh, distribute or give, uh, bartend, uh, that they have the tips, uh, certification.
You did submit the, our, our bartender that's gonna have, has the, the proper training.
So has, she had the training yet, or is it gonna?
She has had the training.
She's had the training.
Yeah, we sent, I believe, her, um, her license or her certificate.
Okay, that must have been just.
I think we sent it this afternoon.
Yep, I didn't see one.
Okay, we're only gonna have, we're only gonna have one bartender.
Yeah, you, I think you had mentioned two in the.
Yeah, we're, we're only having beer and wine, so we're thrilled that one person can be able to handle that.
So that was my concern. I, I wanna make sure that somebody has been properly trained, that we're not gonna have people driving through Dyton under the influence of alcohol. Uh, so it's very important that, uh, their licenses be checked. If, obviously, if I go there for a drink, I'm not gonna, you don't have to question mine, but if somebody's young, that you're not sure of their age, that that person.
We're also gonna have other safeguards in place. Um, only people that, who are, have purchased a bidder's pass will be able to get the alcohol, and we're gonna limit that to two drinks per day, and we're gonna have a punch system, so they only can get two.
Good, I did see that. I was wondering how you're gonna monitor the two drinks a day with that.
Punch system where the bidder's pass will get punched, you know, two drinks and two punches, and that's it for the day.
So does the Board have any, uh, questions?
Actually, I do. Have you spoken with, uh, Bob McDonnell, the Police Department, regards to coverage for that day?
We do have coverage, uh, police coverage for our, we have police coverage for all our auctions.
It's gonna be three detail, uh, is that what I saw? There's a request for three details?
Yeah, yeah, like, if I, like, if I could, like, I did re, like, I did reach out to the chief late this half June, oh, you know, like, oh, like, on the topic of, on the topic of the two-day liquor license, and I do understand that there were details already scheduled for the event. Uh, uh, like, however, like, in talking with the chief and him, uh, like, actually, understanding now that there was, uh, like, actually a liquor license application, uh, he does recommend, and he wasn't able to be here tonight, but he does recommend that if the Board does go forward in granting, um, a two-day liquor license, that there be a minimum, uh, like, of three detail officers, like, at the event for both days.
Certainly, we agree to that.
Okay.
So does everybody have the opportunity to review the application?
I have. Um, I, I have a question. It's not, uh, I have no concerns about the, um, proposal. Uh, if this event, and I suspect it will be, uh, successful, are there plans to have any future events?
That is the plan, yes.
Okay.
We would love to have, uh, this annual car auction, make it an annual event for us.
Awesome.
We're excited about it. You guys come down and see some incredible cars.
Absolutely.
I see you've already posted on, uh, your Facebook page, on Facebook.
They're rolling in every day right now.
They're nice.
Just a nice, uh, classic cars that you're gonna be selling. That's great. Any, yes, Selectman?
Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion?
Uh, yes, I will.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the application of a two-day alcohol and beer and wine license for North Country Arch, eighteen eighty-six, eighteen ninety-two County Street.
Could you just add to that, the three detail, uh, police officers, like, the application said two, we wanna make it three?
Uh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, oh, like, oh, like, and also, oh, like, and also, like, if the, uh, like, if the approval, like, if the approval, if the approval could also be contingent, uh, uh, like, on documentation and license requirements, uh, like, uh, like, actually including insurance. Uh, uh, you know, like, is received as well. We don't yet have insurance, we expect it, but.
We do have, we, we will be getting that tomorrow. We, Hospitality Mutual will be providing our, um, our liquor liability insurance for that two-day event.
Mr. Chairman, uh, and Selectman Hall, um, your, uh, motion was basically to approve the license application as presented. Do you mind if I make an amendment, just to include what the town administrator is saying? Uh, after, as presented, I would add, um, that the license request, um, and approval be contingent upon, um, all the required documentation being received, um, and, uh, all licensing requirements, including a minimum of three detail officers.
Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. You know, on the original motion, any further discussion on the original motion?
As amended.
As amended? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As long as you submit everything to us, we'll be all set, yep.
Have a good event. Mr. Spellman, thank you for the donation as well. Absolutely. Have a good night. It's just more like a cover, it's just covering, because like, if they don't, if they were, if someone, I shouldn't say they, if someone in general were not to get those requirements, we wouldn't wanna have taken the vote, because then they would not have to do that. So that's why we, it's just to be careful, that's all.
Yeah, it's just, uh, they haven't submitted all the information that we normally would get, and our next meeting's August eleventh, which is after this.
We wouldn't have time.
We needed to address it, and by making a condition or part of the, uh, making an amendment that they have to do certain things covers everybody, so. Normally, we would demand that all that information be presented to us, but there was a short notice, there was a short request for this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Going back to new business, uh, the second item was review, discuss, and act on the Board of Assessors' abatement recommendation. We came across our desk, uh, was it last week, uh, Selectman Hall, yes. Came across our desk, uh, there was, uh, some information regarding veterans and senior work program to reduce the taxes of seniors and veterans. And it's something that I asked that we put on the agenda, say, as a possible, uh, possible warrant article. We have a.
For the special?
For the special. We have, uh, a letter from, uh, Carol Borogon, who, by the way, tomorrow is her last day, we wish her the best. From the Board of Assessors. At the Board of Assessors' meeting, uh, Wednesday, actually, we have Mrs. Goulart here too, so she may be able to give us some input on this. Uh, Wednesday, July fourteen, twenty twenty-one, the Board reviewed a new exemption released by the Department of Revenue for senior citizens of veterans' work off abatement program. The Board of Assessors would like the Board of Selectmen to review this informational guideline release and give their opinion on accepting or not accepting this program at the next scheduled town meeting. Mrs. Goulart, do you wanna add anything to this? And you have all the information on.
Either they're not, these are my notes.
If you notice, they're short notes, they're, they're short notes, right?
There's a lot on there.
It's small writing, very small writing, like a cheat sheet.
Yeah, right, up the sleeve.
Exactly.
No, sir. Um, so, the meeting on the fourteenth, we did look at it, and the concerns we had, and the reason why we voted to send it to the Board, on the surface, it looks good. However, whatever money they earn, you have to take federal taxes out of it. The only benefit is the net. So if somebody earns a thousand dollars, and their total federal taxes over the period is two hundred, it's an eight hundred dollar benefit, so that's one issue.
And plus, they're, whatever they put in this, pay into Social Security and Medicare gets taken off of that, too.
The only thing that I think it's exempt from is state tax, so. Another, another issue that we thought about is, when you pay somebody, that increases the number of people covered under your workers' comp policy, and your workers' comp policy is based on the number of employees you have, and claims also, so there could be effect when you get audited on workers' comp, which would be an expense to the town in an increased premium. Uh, another issue is liability. Whether you're a paid person, a volunteer, or whatever, you're under the town's liability policy, so there's a question there. A big issue is confidentiality. Uh, for example, in the Board of Assessors' office, there's all sorts of information there, and the question was, if we were talking about somebody in this department, what could they do? And the concern really was a lot to do with, well, they couldn't do this because this is here, and they couldn't do that, and quite frankly, you can't really discuss what you see. How come that person got a, a exemption for this? So each department head would really have to look at what they would have available for work in their department that, that would have to be done. And again, the, the concern was, is this truly going to be a benefit to people? So again, I guess the other thing we'd need to know is, before we move ahead, is, um, if department, this is probably good for the next department head meeting. If department heads could look at their operation and see if there is any kind of work that could be done, that would be beneficial to the town, would not be overtaxing to the individual, that a, certainly confidentiality could be maintained. Those are important things. So we didn't vote to move ahead with it. Uh, we wanted the opportunity to bring it before you, so you're aware of the, it, the concerns we had.
I ask that this be put on the agenda, but I, really, what I would really support is, right now, we have a five hundred dollar abatement for seniors who qualify certain requirements. I would be more in favor of increasing that. I've spoken to several people about this, and some people say that if they're disabled, they're not gonna be able to do the work, and I do agree with a lot of what you said, that there are some issues that we would have to be concerned about. So with the board, can't vote on it, but with the board, I know you wanna ask a question, Selectman Hall. Would the board be interested in maybe increasing? I would wanna find out the number of people who have taken advantage of the abatement, seniors that qualify. I want that from the tax assessors, to see how much it is, because it's gonna impact the tax, the taxes for everybody else. So I'd be interested in seeing that. I'm sure you're not prepared to do that tonight. But I would be more inclined to support increasing, as we do at the annual town meeting for veterans, it's an automatic thing. We haven't increased the five hundred dollars in a very long time. I don't remember exactly, it was in the two thousand era that we actually started this?
It's been a while, and I'm thinking, I'm thinking it can be up over six hundred dollars now, I think.
I, I actually think it can go to a thousand.
I'm thinking two, but I think there, I think of, there are other communities that might be at like six seventy-five, but, you know, and another thing is, regardless of how this program comes out, for example, if we decide this isn't beneficial, if the amount is increased, and the other thing too is to really have a reach-out program, so people understand, pretty much veterans who are eligible for certain kinds of exemptions, the Veterans Agent takes care of that. But I really wonder how many of the elderly, low-income people we have, who have property, really understand there are some ways that you can get assistance that are covered by the law, and you're, if you're entitled to them, you really need to apply for them.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent, because I, I think in the past, there hasn't been that much publication as to this benefit for the town residents. I had somebody last January, whose father's a senior, lives in Dayton, and wanted to see whether that person qualified. It took me a while to get that information, go on the website, I'm not even sure if we have it on a website here. I did take the person to the tax assessor's office and was able to get the paperwork. They do the interviewer and qualifications and all that kinda stuff, but it should be out there. People should know that if they're in a certain income bracket, asset bracket, because the, the house doesn't count as, as an asset.
No.
And if there's only one person left, the income is reduced. I think it's maybe twenty thousand for one, thirty thousand for two, and assets may be forty thousand for two.
I think another thing too is, if you get SSI, that automatically qualifies you for certain things. I don't know what the limits are, or, or all of that, but, you know, between Social Security Administration, if you have a good caseworker, I guess, and the Board of Assessors, but anything we can get out as an informational thing, I think it would be good, because I, I, again, I don't think a lot of people know it.
Can I?
I actually, Selectman Hall, hold on a second.
Ms. Pacheco, what you recommended, sounds like an excellent idea. But the only question I have for Mrs. Gulat is, if we give seniors and veterans a break, which I support, how does that impact the bottom line? We have a total amount of money that we need to operate, and if we have a reduction with seniors and veterans, how do we make up the difference?
Okay, this isn't new. We'd be talking about, the veterans' benefits are set by law, I believe, so you'd only be looking at what you could do as a board if you wanna increase that amount. But the other thing too is, in all honesty, the amount of money we need to operate the town is determined at town meeting. So going into town meeting, that's why it's that first town meeting, the annual, it is so important to go in with a balanced budget, and we defer things till October, because by then, we know our free cash, and when we look at all of the articles that may have been deferred, or new ones that come along for October, that's all part of what the Finance Committee goes to the meeting, assuming these are gonna pass, these are, we're gonna say no to. But again, the Finance Committee goes into the fall town meeting also with the understanding, this is the most we can spend, and when that meeting is finished, we know exactly how much is gonna be raised and appropriate, and how much is free cash or other funding sources that we use. So this is not gonna have a major impact on tax receipts, because we're not instituting a brand-new program. You're just gonna consider whether or not you want to increase the amount of the exemption. So we're not talking thousands and thousands of dollars.
I agree with everything you're saying, Selectman Gulat. My only, I don't know if concern is the right way. Like, let's, let's take a step back. We talked about communication, like how do we get people to know that this program exists? There's a lot of people, I've spoken to farmers in town that, or people involved in agriculture, who didn't know agricultural exemptions existed. It happens. There, there's a lot of programs out there people don't know. I think if the Council on Aging or some entity like that were to do like a mailer, like the Commission on Disabilities, I think we all may have gotten a mailer from them, to do a mailer with the information on the program, my only concern would be, because I understand it's not a new program, it's not. However, we are getting more information out to more people, so that may increase the involvement. And I would just like to have an idea, if possible, through forecasting, and I know it's probably not possible to be accurate, how much of an increase it may cost if we get the information out there and really ask people to take advantage of it. And I know it's, it may not break the bank, I totally agree with you, but we have the responsibility, when we ask people, as you know, being a selectman for so many years, when we ask people to vote for those things, we have to have some kind of an answer when someone says, how will this impact, you know, the bottom line, as you said, Selectman Hall?
The other thing too is, the strawberry vine goes out to all the elderly, so we can do something there. And I think Veterans Services does something right now. The other thing too is, on the annual town meeting warrant, sometimes if we have space and we're looking for a filler, that could be a reminder about that. I think one time, we had a, almost a whole page we had to fill in, and we put just general town information on it, rather than having a blank page. So those are other things that we can have, and maybe periodic announcements from the board that says, you know, taxes are, quarterly tax payments are coming up, have, if you're elderly, a low income, you might wanna consider checking with the Board of Assessors to see if you're eligible. Just announce it periodically, a few times a year.
There's a certain time period for them to apply. I wanna say it's maybe in January, up until January.
I think so too. I think it's, yeah, I'm thinking it's before the tax rate is actually set, because the first two tax bills are estimates based on this year, but Ja- January will be the real thing, so, so that could be the case.
So just for clarification on this, before everybody goes on Facebook, I think I'm taking advantage of this. I'm seventy years old, and that's the age for this abatement. I am not eligible for this abatement.
But if you're disabled and not seventy years, you can apply.
Yes, but I just wanna make it clear that this is not a benefit that I'm looking for Kenny Pacheco.
The old conflict of interest.
I'm not eligible either, so.
We believe you.
Not everybody will, but thank you for that.
I just wanna mention, just to follow up on something you said, for the benefit of townspeople, our full-time assessor and a long-term appointed, excuse me, elected assessor, Carol Borogod, has submitted her retirement resignation, tomorrow's her last day, and I think everybody wants to wish her the best. She's been an employee of the town for over twenty-three years, because she did work in the assessor's office before she became the appointed full-time assessor, and then ran for assessor, and with her departure, this will be the first time in somewhere between thirty and maybe forty years, we have not had both a full-time assessor who is also an elected official, because Harold Mendoza held that position, David Lyon held it. Carol is the last one, because now, what will happen is that we will be, we are, we have advertised for a full-time assessor. And, and just to give you an update, today at the assessors' meeting, we voted that it would be Carol and the town administrator, who would review the applications, screen them, do initial interviews, so we don't violate open meeting laws and all that good stuff. They will come back with a recommendation to the three assessors, and we will do open interviews for whoever they tell us, the number of whatever. So, so just, so you have an update on how that's going.
Can I ask you about that real quick?
You're not eligible.
I'm not pretending to be. So you get their recommendation. What does the Board of Selectmen get? Do we get both or just, and I always take, full disclosure, I, you know, you've worked with me, I always take the board's recommendation.
Interview of, there's four applications. If they say interview all four, it's gonna be an open public meeting, and obviously, you should be posted. If it's two, whatever it is, okay? There was a question about how do you go about appointing an employee in a department where you are governed by an elected board? And my position is, and I discussed this with the town administrator, my understanding is, in a municipality, the Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority, except in the fire department, because of the strong chief law. Therefore, the Board of Assessors will vote to recommend whoever to the Board of Selectmen, but as the appointing authority, I believe, you have to vote that, not ratify, but actually vote the appointment. The other thing we have to keep in mind is, the, this is a, this is not a union position, because the person will be like the department head. But by the same token, I think there may be a contract involved, Mr. Mullin, an employment contract for this person. There'd be benefits, and they're not in the union, so I would think you better have something in writing, and you're the approval authority for employment contracts.
So we have, if, if I may, Mr. Administrator, just from when we served on the board together, and we did it for five years, we always let the non-union individual decide what they wanted to do. So I guess, I agree with you, I hope they want a contract, because I will be happy. I just think it's better for both parties to have one. It really delineates the relationship and the expectations, but I certainly wouldn't force someone. But to your point, we have had a discussion as a board since Ms. McCarron's departure about, are we gonna do a, a non-union employee benefits policy? Are we gonna do contracts? It's hairy, because some non-union employees are already under contracts, but I think those are good points, and I, my position is, leave it up to the individual, but hope that they want a contract.
Well, the other thing too is, quite frankly, I don't see the Board of Assessors per se negotiating a salary. Obviously, there's money in the budget. But that, that's, like I say, I really don't, we may have input on it, but by the same token, I, I think the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, have all gotta take a look at this. What you've done with the, I realize the town accountant is not under an elected board per se, directly, obviously, they're under the Board of Selectmen, but there has to be something in writing about a benefits package, and to make sure that this person, this full-time, non-union person, has a package, has a something in writing about what their benefits are. So I think this is the way we're gonna proceed. Do you wish to comment, Mr. Mullin? Is this your, do you want to say?
Yeah, yeah, like I understand, yeah, like I understand what we're talking about, like in, we're at, like an in-between point in terms of, you know, do we go the way of a non-union, I, like, non-union personal policy for all non-union employees, like, or do we have non, like, or do we have, oh, you know, individual non-union contracts, like in the rub, like, is the fact that we're having all the turnover now, so we haven't, like, actually have the ability to determine which way we need to go forward. So, yeah, like, it's a really good question. I think we need to think about it over the next few weeks.
Selectman Gulat, and Town Administrator Mullin, you had mentioned something about salary, and I apologize, I have not seen the actual job posting for the assessor. Just like we did with the town accountant's posting though, there was some kind of a figure mentioned, right? Some kind of an upper, like up to, because we had an issue with the town, like, we didn't post a salary figure, and so there was a misunderstanding, or there even could be misunderstandings, people expecting a certain amount, and so that ended up being an issue, actually, because one person ended up saying, that's not, like, enough for me. And so that's why we started including the salary, or upper level at least, in the job posting.
So, yeah, like in the job posting for the principal assessor that went out, I think the current principal assessor recommended, oh, you know, that we have it open-ended and see who we get, and I'll tell you that we do have a good pool.
I don't remember a range in there either.
Because I would love to, I'm bringing this up simply because, no offense, gentlemen, I have, I've never been an assessor before, I do not know what the market rate is for a principal assessor. I assume it's comparable with something like an accountant or a clerk treasurer, but I would love, like, input on things like that from the Board of Assessors would be, I would think, important to someone like me.
Well, and the other thing too is, I think, like we've done with, when, when longtime experienced employees have left, we don't automatically hire somebody at the rate that that person was getting, because in some cases, I mean, I realize she's been here twenty-three years, not always in that position, but she worked herself to merit that kind of an increase, and it got voted at town meeting, and like our town accountant, the one that we had that left had been here thirteen years. So, you know, all of that has to be looked at.
In the town clerk, same thing. We didn't give what she was making.
So, in effect, there is, there is latitude for the Board of Selectmen, Board of Assessors. As I say, there's money in the budget, that's all I can tell you. And I couldn't tell you right now what the money for that position is that's budgeted, but I would think from, I reviewed the applications and gave them to the town administrator, simply because I didn't wanna get into conflict of interest, so I couldn't give them to Carol or whatever. And the other assessor is going to borrow the folder from Mr. Mullin, take a look at it, give it back, and then he and Mrs. Borogod are going to sit down and do what they have to do to come back to us. So there's no conflict, no, excuse me, no open meeting violations and all that other stuff. Okay?
Okay, we really went down this way when we were talking about the Board of Assessors' abatement recommendation. So are we, can we tend to agree, don't necessarily have to take a vote on, but possibly put on the warrant, a, an increase in the abatement for the seniors in town, after looking at figures, that we get to see how many have applied in the past, and would, you know, publication, everything else, it's gonna be more, never so we can see what the impact's gonna be, as you brought up, so.
I was always gonna support it going on the warrant. I think, I just want my, I wanna see some sort of numbers before I recommend it, that's all. Like, put my name on it.
So just so you have an idea is what I'm thinking of, I'm thinking increase into seven fifty, now it's five hundred, now increase into seven fifty. Not necessarily go to a thousand figure, but that's something that's gonna be open debate, so we'll get that information.
We could forecast with the two different, you know, figures and see what it is. I'm fine with that, Selectman Pacheco.
So the next agenda item is the host community agreement with Marigold. Has people, everybody looked at the host agreement?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, like, and there is an updated agreement, uh, like, actually, like Karen, I shared with you, and there are two, there were, actually, two very quick modifications, and we do have attorney Kaylee Heppern, who's representing Marigold on the Zoom as well, and I wanna thank Kaylee for her patience, waiting two hours and twenty-eight minutes, but.
I don't have a gavel.
Uh, but, um, one of the modifications is in, is in paragraph one A, like on the second page. Uh, like, in the local option tax, that is only applies, oh, to retail, oh, to retail establishments, so we struck that. Uh, like, and agreed to strike that with our attorney, uh, yeah, with attorney Costa as well.
And that wasn't in the Pure Oasis one either, right?
Uh, yes, it was. Uh, and yes, today, I actually reached out to Pure Oasis, and I offered them an opportunity, oh, you know, to have an amended agreement, because like, we obviously wanna treat everyone fairly and, and on the same level. So, I yell, the last sentence of one A, and then the, the. And then the, the other typo, which is just a really, a very minor typo, was on the signature page in the footer, where we actually changed Pure Oasis to Marigro. Because, like, our earlier footer change actually didn't carry forward.
Where is this?
It's on the very part, very bottom of page 10.
Oh, okay, I see it, thank you.
I, like, in everything else, yes.
How to switch those templates out.
Oh, my God, the templates.
You know how it goes.
Yes. Oh, yeah, like, so like, all the provisions, oh, you know, like, either match what's already in the Pure Oasis HCA. And if they don't, we've offered Pure Oasis, oh, like, an opportunity, oh, like, an opportunity to have an up, oh, 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 yeah, for, like, an updated HCA.
Do you think they may not even bother? Because it's just not even possible, what, what that language is? Like, that isn't there, doesn't matter? Because it's, it can't be done?
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does the board have any questions about the host agreement? Selectman Hall?
This agreement.
Yes.
Is it subject to ZBA approval?
Yes, yes, actually, in paragraph one, hold on a second, it is, yes, it is, yes. I, like, and there's a, and there's a section in here, I forget the section, but they have to go through all the town's local approval process. And in this matter, they have to go through the planning board for a special permit. I, like, and, oh, yeah, like, oh, and, oh, and everything is conditioned on that. I, like, and with the state as well.
And that's how our, they've always been, the, the other HCA for the 200 William Street was the same way. Because every board, like, even though we appoint the zoning board, I, we've been on the zoning board, they still operate independently. Like, we don't give them calls and say, you're gonna, that's totally not allowed, like, not permissible. So that's a good point, though, yeah. If at any point it fails, theoretically, this is not, is null and void.
So, yeah, like, and that's actually at the top of actually paragraph one. Oh, yeah, like, a ref, I'm going to reference that the company, oh, it does receive all necessary permits and approvals of the town.
That's good.
Are there any other questions?
No, I think this is well done, if I may, Mr. Chairman. And I would thank Ms. Hepburn, no relation to Audrey, and also thank our town administrator for negotiating a really good host community agreement in line with our other host community agreements that have already been effectuated.
So I will entertain a motion if we have no other questions.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the host community agreement between the Town of Dayton and Marigro LLC as presented this evening with the two changes that Town Administrator Mullen had described this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Propose abstention, the ayes have it.
Good work.
Thank you.
Big deal.
Thank you, and thank you, Attorney Hepburn.
Does she want to say anything?
No, that was perfect, thank you.
We approved it, so she doesn't want to say anything. Good night. The next agenda item is item number D, review, discuss, and act on lease agreement with the Ares Building System LLC regarding library modular trailer. We've given all the paperwork, we got the lease. Does anybody have any questions regarding the lease? Or have any questions for building commissioner regarding this?
I did not, I apologize, I was unable.
Don't apologize if you don't have a question.
No, no, that's not what I'm apologizing for. I never apologized for that. I was unable to attend a finance committee meeting where I think there was a discussion of whether or not the $31-ish thousand could be reimbursed with CARES Act. It cannot, we did get clarification on that. And I am still, I'm still happy to support this.
Yes, and you attended the FinCon meeting, I think, also, where there were money taken out of different accounts to be used for this here. So the town does have the money for this. This is a temporary, as everybody knows, temporary solution for immediate problem with the library. Hopefully someday we'll get a new library, but at this point, we're not in a position to do that. Any questions about the, the lease agreement?
No, I would just thank everyone involved, especially our building commissioner and town administrator for making this a priority. I know you have a lot to do, and you pride yourself on that. But you shifted a lot of things around to make this happen by the Labor Day deadline, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I understand that you, as well as the town administrator, want to actually look at these modulas. And this is the recommendation that we, we go, it's, I know it's a little higher than the other one, but it seems like this is so much better than the.
Yes, absolutely. This particular contract is for a brand-new model. The other vendors that we procured actually did not have brand-new ones. So even though they seemed slightly cheaper, it was definitely not where we wanted to put our library. So then the last point is, this is for a 12-month lease. So we have a lot of work to do over the next 12 months. But this company has told us that we have a month-to-month holdover. So in 12 months, they're not going to take it away. But I want everybody to know that I'm not in favor of the library staying here. We need to find a permanent hold for that.
Do we have to give them notice, Mr. Commissioner, if we do want to continue month-to-month? Like, do we have to tell them a month before or something?
I think my exact words were about month eight. We'll get on a conference call with him, Commissioner Mullen and I, and tell him our progress and where we are. That way, he knows this, this is either staying here for another couple of months, or it'll be available.
Thank you, sir.
Selectman Hall?
I assume, because since I don't read anything in here, that ADA, Mister Gale has reviewed this, and he doesn't have any objections.
Oh, yeah, like, this is really only for, like, the lease, oh, you know, like, in the, oh, like, in the contract, we, like, we will be getting an accessible restroom within the trailer. And, oh, like, it's coming with, oh, like, it's coming with, like, a code compliant and accessible ramp as well. I, like, we've asked, oh, you know, like, I, like, already, like, already actually asked for the ramp drawings in advance, so we can start reviewing them before it gets here.
And to, you, you don't mind. To your point, Selectman Hall, I think what you're getting at, and it's a good point, is, would things like that be forwarded to Mister Gale? Just so he can be sure that.
Absolutely, that's why we asked for the drawings in advance, and then we can send them to him, and everyone can be on the same page.
Are there any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Give me a moment here. This is times I miss Selectman Goulart. I just want to make sure I put, no, I know, but I just want to make sure I put all the, she'll tell me if I don't do it correctly. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the lease proposal by Ares Building Systems LLC for the equipment as described in the lease proposal this evening.
In the amount of?
And, and, excuse me, equipment and services. In the amount of $31,440.
Thank you, Mrs. Goulart.
Thank you, Mrs. Goulart.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes. In his proposal, it also notes, does not include applicable state and local taxes. Are all of those waived, or are there going to be additions?
Yeah, we're, we're tax exempt, so there are no taxes applicable. And then, of course, the permit to install it, the permit fee will be waived because it's town property.
Okay.
Good question.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Propose abstention, the ayes have it.
Good work.
Temporary library.
That's good.
The next agenda item is to propose schedule for special town meeting, open of special town meeting warrant. I noticed in, in the packet here, Town Administrator, that we had discussed a date of November 8th. And I see here proposed meeting date is November 1st. That's changed?
Yes, like, it ha, oh, yes, it has. Like, in advance, we reached out actually to members of the FinCon as well to assess their availability as well. And they had some conflicts for the date on the 8th. I, so like, I, and based on that, we're proposing November 1st, which would bring us, based on that hypothetically, the special town meeting warrant will be, like, actually opened by the Board of Selectmen on the 11th of August. It was closed on September 9th. Like, at the meeting on September 29th, the board would, like, actually, like, place articles on the warrant and review the draft warrant. With the final signatures on the warrant for October 13th, would the warrant to be posted in advance of a November 1st, 2021 special town meeting date on October 18th.
Anybody have any questions about those dates?
I just, I'm going to shock some people. I do like tradition, and we have traditionally had the special town meeting in October. We didn't have it last year in October because of the pandemic. And then we had the town administrator left, and there were a lot of moving parts.
Yep.
Why can't we go back to having it in October? And I know that pushes everything up. And if that's the answer, I will accept it. And I'm certainly not going to die on the hill over this, but.
So, yeah, if there's any, if I could.
If I may add, just one last thing. The reason I'm bringing this up is because I want us to get back to not just our tradition, but I'll give you an example. So I believe our town bylaws say we should have our annual town meeting in May. So I just don't want us to keep, and now we have it in June, and I understand why. And I don't want to change that. But I want, I don't want us to also change the special town meeting if we don't, because people expect it to be in October, I think is the expectation. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yes. And I do like a May annual town meeting, just actually personally and professionally, I do like that. But in, like, in terms of, I'm in terms of an early November date. And I do, I, like, absolutely understand what you're saying. And I also like an October date. However, based on the transition in our town accountant, we don't have a town accountant right now. I, like, and that, oh, you know, like, oh, you know, has already act, I, like, and that has already act, that has already impacted how we're closing up 21. Oh, you know, and I don't want us, I mean, oh, oh, yeah, like, I, oh, yeah, like, I want to have a little bit of flexibility in terms of the certification. Oh, yeah, like, in terms of the certification of free cash. Oh, you know, like, and our consultant who's working with us, I don't want to, oh, you know, like, if we have an October 18th date, I want, oh, you know, like, oh, you know, like, any date to be attainable and have our free cash in hand. Oh, you know, oh, you, oh, you know, and I don't want to rush, oh, you know, that whole process, because I really don't know his workload either. Oh, yeah, like, I'm thinking, oh, yeah, like, I want to have our free cash in hand for a special town meeting, and I don't want to rush.
I just.
Oh, any of that process, but I do want to get back to that.
I understand, my, we were just, the reason I bring it up is, is not to be a sickler, because you know me, I'm, I would go with the flow.
You're being a sickler.
I am on this. Because we're talk, the reason is because we're talking about putting an important bylaw, for example, that will get people to come. Well, if people expect it to be in October, and it's in October, then you'll probably get more people to go. So that was the only reason I brought that up. But if it needs to, if the board is fine with it being November 1st, I'm fine with it.
I'm going to, I'm going to support November 1st. That's an important date for me and my wife. 50 years ago, on November 1st, 1971, my girlfriend, soon to become my wife, 11 days later, went to see 10 Years After in Boston. It's probably a group you've never heard of.
Oh, yeah, way before me.
Alvin Lee. And every, every November 1st, my wife and I put the album on our stereo and listened to 10 Years After, so.
Won't be doing it this year.
But I'm okay, I'm okay, we'll do it in the morning, we'll do it in the morning. But I'm okay with November 1st. I'm joking, because 10 Years After, somebody's got to have heard of the group 10 Years After. Thank you, thank you.
Alvin Lee.
Alvin Lee, may he rest in peace.
Just give us a thumbs up or down on that band.
You can have a listen to, appreciate it, nice taste.
Oh, complimentary.
Is it vocal instrumental or both, or what?
She plays guitars and drums, I mean.
Probably psychedelic, I'm like.
Psychedelic and, I don't know.
Age of Aquarius.
Not like that.
Marijuana was not legal at that time, so.
That's to me, it wasn't being smoked.
Uh-oh, we're getting, no. Selectman Hall, seriously, yes.
Is this wishful thinking? We're not here yet.
Selectman Hall has a question or a comment?
In support of the November 1st date, I question, not only will the accountant be up to speed in October, would the new assessor be up to speed in October? Even if, will you have somebody by November 1st?
Yes, I'm of the, oh, yeah, like, yes, I'm of a reason to believe that we would hopefully have a new assessor by then. But even if we don't, I think we can have all the plans in place. Oh, yeah, like, at any rate, oh, oh, yeah, like, in order to have the meeting, I don't see any issue with that.
I agree that the accountant's absolutely critical, because they do all the numbers and work with the finance committee. So I'm happy to support November 1st.
So everybody's okay with the dates that have been presented to us? If so, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the proposed meeting date and schedule for the upcoming special town meeting 2021 as presented this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, propose abstention, the ayes have it. The next agenda item is review and discuss an act and appoint Daniel LaPage to the Conservation Committee. I did speak to the chairman the other day, and he's looking forward to getting the new member on the Conservation Committee. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we appoint Daniel LaPage to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, under discussion, I know they created an associate member position because they're, they need, wanted to train, like, have people get, which makes sense, right? Have people get the rope for things. Is there a vacancy on there? I guess, how are we, I didn't think there was a vacancy. And I'm fine with the appointment, I have no issue. But like, how, I thought they had a set number of positions, and there, there were no vacancies. So what are we appointing this person to?
To be honest with you, like, I'm not entirely sure. Like, I know, like, I'm trusting the, oh, like, input on the ConCom on this.
But there's, did, I guess, here's my question. Did, I know Mister, I know Mister Mello was no longer doing the conservation agent work, but he's still on the commission, right?
Yes, he's still the secretary.
I believe he is.
There's not a vacancy. Is this for an associate member?
Yes.
Okay, then I will retract my motion if Selectman Hall retracts his second.
You had your hand up, Selectman Hall.
Yes, I, I have a frustration. Can we get these committees to put recommendations in writing?
That's how it has been, that's how it has been. This one didn't have one, but I agree, yeah.
It's a really good idea.
Because that means we know they have assessed
Yep.
the lay of the lands. And are you still wanting us to follow through with the appointment of Mister LaPage as an associate member, which I'm happy to do? I don't mean to put you on the spot. Do you want us to wait, or do you want us to address it this evening?
No, like, if you could just wait for five minutes, and I'll get the answer.
All right.
So they have six members, and they have an associate member, Kevin Bernato. And I remember.
No, no, Frank Christofouli is the associate. Kevin is actually on the commission.
Well, then our website is.
It's not correct, then.
It's not correct. I believe it is Kevin Bernato, because when I talked to the chairman the other day, he, he mentioned that he's the associate member, that Mister Bernato is. So I think that this.
It was definitely Mister Christofouli, for sure, because he's brand-new. And Kevin was appointed because he is on a lot of other committees and brings a wealth of experience. But that's neither here nor there, there's not a vacancy, is my point. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to retract my motion if Selectman Hall retracts his second. And I will motion to take it under advisement, and we'll come back when we have a second.
So any further? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose abstention, the ayes have it.
Sorry, Mr. Administrator.
No, that's fine.
So next agenda item is to appoint Mike Mullen to the Policy Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mike Mullen Jr. to the Policy Advisory Board.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, propose abstention. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. The next agenda item is to appoint Marilyn Edge as a tobacco control officer. The Board of Selectmen is dated July 13th. The Board of Health voted Thursday, July 8th, 2021, to recommend Marilyn Edge to be appointed as the health agent for tobacco control enforcement. The Board of Health is pleased to recommend him. To recommend him for this position, please. Is this a, I probably shouldn't even ask.
It's a year usually, yeah.
No, the name is Marilyn, I'm just wondering.
Marilyn Edge.
It's a woman, okay.
And she's always, I was actually surprised she wasn't on.
The Board of Health is pleased to recommend her for this position, please.
Okay, Call of Duty.
I will entertain, I'm gonna speed this meeting along and we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marilyn Edge as tobacco control officer.
Second. Second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Next agenda item is to review, discuss and act on the appointment of Kirsten Anis to the Human Rights Committee. I did, I had an opportunity to see the interview. As you know, I'm the liaison for the Human Rights Committee. I wasn't able to actually participate in it because my internet was down. I was able to go on my phone and listen to part of the meeting anyway. And she gave a very good interview. Selectman Hall.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kirsten Anis to the Human Rights Committee.
Is there a second?
A second, yes.
Any discussion?
Yeah, before we vote, I just want, this is a committee, it's the Human Rights Committee, and I just want, if we could get back, if you could let them know that it's not the Commission on Human Rights, like the Commission on Disability, those are state recognized and state, like state law backs them and grants them their authority. So just going forward, it's Human Rights Committee.
We have a meeting next.
I know it's a small thing, but it can.
Yes, this, this committee has only been around for about 10 months. It's a volunteer committee, nobody gets paid, and they're doing great work, to be quite frank, so.
Further discussion.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. And I didn't read the letter, but there was a letter from the Commission Committee on Disability regarding this recommendation. You had asked that committees make recommendations.
Yes.
Yeah, so they, they did. I did not read that letter, but they did. Okay, so, but it's in the, it's in the pack. The next, let's go to correspondence. A letter from Mark Duffy, Assistant Harbor Master. Gentlemen, it's been both an honor and pleasure to have served as Assistant Harbor Master, Mooring Officer, indictment representative of Tonton River Stewardship Council, effective July 31st. It's actually gonna be July 1st, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Effective July 1st, I am resigning from the above mentioned position. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the resignation letter from Assistant, former Assistant Harbor Master slash Mooring Officer Mark Duffy with thanks and appreciation for his years of commitment and service.
A second.
Any further discussion? Any discussion? Yes.
Will we be reposting this position to Phil?
We should. And the way that it's, I don't, I'm not sure post, the way that it happened, we create, we either created or there was a vacancy and Mr. Marino, because he's a boat person, he knows people that are capable of doing these jobs. So we usually get kind of a recommendation or an idea from him. So maybe if we could just connect.
Yeah, definitely reach out to the Harbor Master.
For sure.
If no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. The next agenda item is the resignation request from Phyllis Haskell, resignation from the Insurance Advisory Committee. Actually, I would like to resign from the Insurance Advisory Committee. This letter was dated July 14th.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the resignation letter of Mrs. Phyllis Haskell from the Insurance Advisory Committee with thanks and appreciation for her service.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. The next agenda item is a letter that I received. Dear Ken, for reasons best known to me, I am submitting my resignation as a member of the Dayton Human Rights Commission effective immediately. I will continue to support the efforts and missions of this commission in its endeavor to ensure the rights and dignity of the, of all the people. Just wanna point out that Roberto, as well as, the next one is Steve Mullin, they've been a member of the Human Rights Commission since probably December, possibly January. They've been active members. They actually did a presentation in June on Gay Pride Month. What was, what was upsetting at this particular last meeting, and it's probably the reason why they're resigning, is that there was a comment made to them that they both were addressing and someone said, they seem to have a lot of awful, awful lot of things to say at these meetings, but yet they don't wanna volunteer to be the chairperson. As far as I know, all the members of the Human Rights Commission have never been on any other committee before. So they're not experienced to become the chairperson or whatever. And people have personal reasons as to why they don't wanna be the chairperson. We don't need to publicize it. We don't need the work situation, the family situation, that, we don't have their health, know the health situation. So I just thought that that question was inappropriate and I'm sure that that's the reason why they're resigning. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Roberto Font.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the resignation of Roberto Font from the Human Rights Committee with thanks and appreciation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. The next agenda item is, Dear Ken, I hope this email finds you well. It is with regret that I need to inform you of my resignation from the Dayton Human Rights Commission. Upon accepting the appointment last year, I was unaware of the limited authority the commission has in decisions regarding human rights and equality initiatives we deemed advantageous for the betterment of society. I will, will be resigning effective immediately. Thank you for the opportunity and best wishes to you and the incredible caring individuals who are members of this commission. I will entertain a motion to approve the resignation of Steve Mullin.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that, I'm sorry, so moved. I'll make it easy for you, Mrs. Brady.
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I just wanted to say, I have no idea why those two individuals resigned. What I will say is, I did watch the meeting and I did make a post about it. And all I'm saying is, we can all disagree, that's great, that's fine, that's the best of Americas when we disagree. I just ask that we treat each other with respect. There is a way to make your point without being aggressive, without purposely offending the other person, without attacking, name-calling. None of that should happen in a public meeting, ever, ever. I don't care if there's a chairman or not. There should be a chairman, I agree. And it should be someone that understands how meetings are conducted. And probably had there been a chairman, that wouldn't have happened because the chairman only, is the only person that can recognize someone to speak, okay? All I'm asking is, if you attend a public meeting, we are, they're just volunteers. They're just volunteers and they're your neighbors. They live next to you. Your kids probably go to the same schools. There's no reason to treat people that way, ever. Unexcusable, ever, period.
I agree.
I'll get off my soap.
We're having difficulty getting people to join committees.
We wonder why.
We wonder why. And it probably tells you why we need a Human Rights Commission Committee. Anyway, are there any acknowledgements? I don't think so.
Yeah, I got a little card.
Lot of notes on it or?
Just one side. I didn't know there was a write-off.
Is that the same cheat sheet from before?
I think she has separate ones.
She just flipped it over.
Since May, the town of Dayton has been working with the Tonton Conservation Commission relative to Dora Estates, which is a development that's occurring on the Segregance River in Tonton, right off of 44. The Stormwater Committee, some members, not the whole committee, were involved with town administrator and we have met, we attended three meetings of the Tonton Concom because we had concerns about stormwater runoff, pollution of the river, and also the effect of the construction and blasting that took place because of the Dayton Water District wellfields. As of the meeting this month, prior to that meeting, Mr. Agia, Mr. Pilling and I met with the individual who drew the plans. They came back with a completely, brand-new set of plans. The first one and the revisions were just not acceptable. But in any case, we believe that that has all been resolved, that the items that were discussed, that we raised as issues have been addressed. I'm waiting for a geologist's report on effects of blasting after the fact. And we are waiting for the last or the most recent plan. The only thing that was in question was the size of a drainpipe from a basin. So I want to thank Mr. Pilling, Mr. Mullin, Ms. Caldonia, Mr. Reins, Mr. Agia, Mr. Digits, Paul Sylvia, who is the Town of Somerset PE Water and Sewer Superintendent, Jeff Clunin, Jason Quinn, Dayton Water District, Mr. Hull, because at one time or another, all of these people have been involved either in meetings or discussions, have gone to the public hearings that were held in Tonton. And I think we achieved what we had set out to achieve, meaning that we could get this resolved at a low level without getting the full board involved and having to take legal action. DEP did get involved and they did issue some, not, it wasn't a stop work audit. It was more like, you can't work in this area or this area, but you can work over there until we get all of these things ironed out. Town of Somerset was involved practically from day one because of their water rights to the Segregance River, which we also have. And when this issue was brought to me, I spoke with Mr. Mullin and we decided we would do the best we could to get this involved without going to court, without getting into a battle with the city of Tonton or anybody else. So Mr. Agia and Mr. Pilling, after reviewing the latest plan, said, if that plan had been brought in initially, we wouldn't have had to go the route we got. But I just want you to know, I appreciate what everybody did. The town of Dayton was well represented. And I would think the message is clear that the town of Dayton will speak up when its best interests are of concern. And certainly dealing with the, the river and everything that went with it. The town of Somerset, early on, said they were a party of interest and so was the Dayton Water Commissioners with this. But the, the involvement was from the town of Dayton, okay? So again, thank you, everybody that helped with it. And the other thing I wanted to mention was the, we had visitors from Canada on the, on the 20th. And they were from Grasshopper, which is the solar developer on the corner of Brook and Pine. And we met them here. There were three individuals. And you can post that picture on Facebook and I will send you the names because.
Thank you.
One of the individuals from Canada, I didn't have his last name, and he was the highest ranking person there. He was only introduced by his first name, but I have that now. So we visited the site and looked at the areas of concern because when we had the, whatever that hurricane or whatever that storm was, there were runoff issues. But all of that had been addressed. Selectman Chico was with us. He saw where the work had been done for additional runoff control. And the comment was made by Mr. Hafiz, who is the gentleman that I've been dealing with most of the time, that they visited other sites when they were here. They came from Mississauga, which is right near Toronto, and they were finally allowed to come across the border, limited because it's business. But of all the other sites that they have, there were no town representatives there. And I was quite surprised to see the number of town officials who came to the SUT, were interested in meeting them and discussing the whole thing. And he also said, he was very complimentary, because he said, the town of Dayton has done so much to help them with local issues because, again, they're in Canada, they couldn't leave the country. The construction company, I believe, I know that there was connections to North Carolina. The engineer is from, I think it's Plainville, but.
Somebody was from New Jersey.
Yes, yes. And there were a lot of out-of-state plates, quite frankly. But he was very complimentary on the town of Dayton and how they really did everything they could to help with whatever came up, whether it was relocating the water pipe or finding somebody to do precast for that culvert. But, and the last thing is, Ms. Russell, who was here, she's the person that I dealt with for the pilot agreement. So that pilot agreement, although you don't have it yet, it's resolved. It's based on the boilerplate that got approved at town meeting. So everything was very positive that came out of that. And Dr. Z is gonna post the group picture that was taken at the site when we went there. So I just wanna thank everybody.
I wanna thank you for the work that you've done with this and working on the pilot agreement.
It's weird though, a little bit, Selectman Goulart, because when you say their names, I wasn't able to go to the site visit. So I only know them from email, basically. I don't have a face.
Very good cross-section of town officials involved with everything relative to the solar farm and site visit. We had excellent representation when we went into the Tonkin meetings. As a matter of fact, we were all spaced out in the, the big meeting room. And the first night when they continued it to the next month, and the camera showed us leaving, there were a lot of empty seats in that room. So that shows you how many people were present from Dayton, which is very good.
Not just that, but she knew the old trick to spread out and make it look like you're taking up more.
Strictly because of the virus.
Social distancing.
The next agenda item is minutes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting, minutes of May 12th, 2021, and June 16th, 2021.
So moved.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to review the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting, minutes of March 20th, 2021, May 26th, 2021, June 23rd, 2021, and July 14th, 2021.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Approve and release the Board of Selectmen's Executive Session minutes of January 25th, 2021 with redactions.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve and release the Board of Selectmen's Executive Session minutes of January 25th, 2021 with, with redactions.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
May I end a discussion? Just because this was brought up.
Just when I didn't ask about discussion, yeah, no, seriously.
I saw you trying to skip that. But this was raised at a public meeting. This is very short and I think it's appropriate that we just read the part that was in question.
Would you read it, please?
Yep. The executive session was called to order at 9:55 PM by Chairman Zagrafos. Performance evaluations. Chairman Zagrafos announced that the performance evaluations for non-union employees were complete and were in the Selectmen's office for review. He asked the members of the board to view them at their earliest convenience. And that's it. Thank you.
Did I already get the motion?
It's a motion to.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Approval of the warrants. Do you have the information on the warrants?
I do. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the following warrants, all dated July 21st, 2021. 3A-22 in the amount of $112,393.64, 3B-22 in the amount of $446,102.27, and 3C-22 in the amount of $1,975.56.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the following warrants, all dated July 28th, 2021. 4A-22 in the amount of $118,576.07, 4B-22 in the amount of $19,420.40, and 4C-22 in the amount of $402,860.06.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Public input. Is there anybody on Zoom? Public input? Selectman Hall?
I'd like to use this opportunity as a taxpayer in the town of Dayton to ask that the Board of Selectmen meet with the Human Rights Committee to discuss how we can support them, to make that committee stronger. that committee stronger and effective.
I'll support that.
One of my concerns, two of my concerns. One, and I was really confused myself and Brett, thank you so much for clarifying. It is a committee. I approve it. The second, they have had trouble from the get-go in how they have been received by the community. I think that committee is important. And I don't want to disband it or see it go away because everybody quits. I think there needs to be some clarity as to what they do. And I'm wondering if we should even look at expanding the scope of what they do. And that's why I'd like that to be a discussion that the three of us have with them, to see how we can help them, listen to their concerns, and offer suggestions, or maybe even vote on ways that we can help them. I'm not exactly sure, you know?
Well, we don't know where the discussion would lead us. But the reason I'm going to support this is because when we got Mr. Chairman that letter of resignation, one of them alluded to there being some misunderstanding, miscommunication in what type of authority they actually had. And I think that part does fall on the Board of Selectmen, because we were charged with creating the committee and sort of giving them an idea of what was expected. So, I will support having this meeting.
I think part of that confusion as to what they can and cannot do was, when I submitted the letter that we got back in January, disgusting letter, and asked them to give a position on the flying the gay pride flag, they thought incorrectly that they would be making the decision on it, or coming, or they would be making the flag policy for the town, which they can't. We would be making decisions regarding, I mean, they made recommendations to the board. You weren't on the board at that time, Selectman Hall. But they made recommendation that we fly the flag. However, we did not address that to the board. But they, it was a recommendation only. They can't tell us or tell the town residents.
No, I was-
So, there was some miscommunication. I had only met the two members that resigned. I met them at the Firecracker Festival. It's the first time I met them. We haven't had an in-person meeting, but next Tuesday, we're going to have an in-person meeting and Zoom. So, I'm not sure exactly where you want to go with this. Do you want to meet at one of their meetings? I'm not sure.
I think that might be good, actually. And I think if Mrs. Brady could post, I don't want to steal your idea, Selectmen Hall. If you want to do a separate meeting, and it's the Board of Selectmen, and they come to us, that's fine. But they seem to be having trouble at their meeting.
Separate meeting.
Yeah. Okay, we can do that, too. That's fine.
I mean, no, no. When you say separate, at-
I want to go to their meeting and discuss it with them-
Right, right.
-at their meeting.
Right.
But I also want to be very clear. This is only going to solve half the problem. The other problem is that people need to understand, it's fine to disagree with people. We're not ask, I'm not asking or expecting 8,000 people in the Town of Dayton to agree with the Human Rights Committee, or even its purpose, or even the fact that it should be there. What I need people to understand is that there's a proper way to treat people. You treat people with respect, and you treat people the way you want to be treated. I have never in my life, although there were some chaotic ZBA meetings, let's be honest. There are some crazy ones, but never, never in my life have I seen that type of, just being overrun, a public meeting. It should not happen. So, we just, that's part of the problem. I'll address the fact that they don't really, it's not clear, maybe in their minds, what they're supposed to be doing. But the other part of the problem is, we need to send a message that it's fine to disagree, but there's a way to do it. No one's going to shut anyone off. Since I've been here as a Selectman, I've had people come and tell me I was the absolute worst. And do you know what the appropriate thing to do when someone does that? It's to say, "Thank you so much for coming and letting me know what you think." There's a way to handle the situation. People just, you can disagree without being, it's really as simple as that. Disagree without being, I can't even believe I'm here saying this at 9:00 PM. Just treat people with respect. You don't got to agree. That's all. It's, and that's the other half of the equation for me.
I think once the level professionalism will also build confidence in the community as well.
We have to admit, too, though, Selectmen Hall, that there, there will just be people that don't agree with them, and that's fine.
Well, that's where a good chairman controls it by saying exactly what he should-
Well, I will say again that this is a relatively new committee, 10 months. They're volunteers. They're not getting paid. I've suggested that they review the Robert Rules of Order, because that's what, not for the annual town meeting, but that's what they can use for these type of minutes. They have asked for the, did we ever approve the recommendations for the boards and committees that came up?
The board and handbook.
They have asked for that, so I'm not sure they have it.
I think Mrs. Kerwin sent, emailed it out.
The what?
The board and committee handbook that tells everyone what you're expected as a committee member. They said they didn't have it.
They've asked for it. I know that's, whether they, I mean, we've had, it may have been sent to the chairman who resigned. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, it's possible. There's been a lot of-
I do have, we do have a meeting on next Tuesday. I will advise them that they're a committee, not a commission. It's too late for you, I mean, you can attend, but it's too late for us to have a Board of Selectmen.
We can have, we can give it some time. That's fine. Maybe they'll pick a chairman between now and-
Well, just so we can formulate our questions and our-
The vice chair has been acting as chairman, and she's doing an excellent job. She's in contact with me all the time, because I'm not a, number one, she talks to me, it's not a quorum. Number two, I'm a non-voting member, so I've given her some guidance. Apparently, I haven't given her enough guidance, but that's fine.
Now, just for my information, if you're a non-voting member, do you, the open meeting law still applies to?
I think what he, yes. It does any time. What he's saying is, he can talk to one person on the committee without violating, because it's not a quorum.
Right, no, but-
But yeah, always, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Even if you're non-voting?
Yep. Well, I think that that was helpful.
Thank you.
Oh, Mrs. Goulart, are you coming up with a card?
No, no, I got my key.
Jim, grab that thing.
I think what that committee needs, which most of our committees have, is some understanding of exactly what they're supposed to do, not necessarily powers, duties, and all that. For example, the Stormwater Committee's got a bylaw and regulations. They've been around since 2007. And when we didn't have a Stormwater Committee, obviously, there were others who were responsible. The other thing that the Stormwater Committee has, which is probably unique in the town, is the number of experts that sit on the committee. Everyone's got expertise in a certain area, so that when something comes up, the right person speaks up and says, and they address it. When you think about the presentation we had from the Town of Easton, and they brought us an outline of a problem they dealt with, if there were an outline of, these are the kinds of issues that the Storm, the, yeah, the Human Rights Committee may be involved with. And think about what Easton came up with, because it's just not one issue. It's whatever comes down the pipe. So, that they would have some kind of an understanding of what are we supposed to work on. As I said, that's not a question for the Stormwater Committee, because we've already got the rules and the bylaws and all that. But it might help the chairman, as far as what are we supposed to focus on, if the public wants to go to them and say, as we know what the Easton problem was with discrimination, that somebody is having a similar problem, then the Human Rights Committee will say, "Okay, this falls under us. What can we do to help this person? And we need to be in contact with the Board of Selectmen, because if it's, it becomes beyond that point, the Board of Selectmen would have to take action." Unlike the Stormwater Committee that has the bylaw and the regs, and we can go out and do inspections and all that stuff, and we've got items we can enforce. So, that may help them also, because it, I don't think they have a clear guide of what are we supposed to follow. And when that letter talked about powers and that, the bylaw and regs, it's not like, so if we do this, how far can we go? And they need to understand what they can do at their committee level, and what they have to bring to the Board of Selectmen that would require town action from the board.
I would just ask my colleagues to look at their mission statement and their goals, because it does address what you just talked about. If they, somebody tells them, "I've been discriminated against," or whatever, it says that they have to follow through. They don't take action. They're not going to, you know, confront the person, but they would contact the appropriate, if it's a hate crime, they're going to notify the police department for something that needs to go before the board. But that's in the mission statement as far as what they need to do.
Now, that's all they do, or there are other things?
Oh, there's six or eight. I should have brought the, and I brought it, too.
A good learning tool is what Easton gave us, because they have an outline of a problem they dealt with and how they dealt with it. And going forward, they got formed because of that situation that they talked about, and then they handled other things. But I think that would be helpful, too, because even though they have a mission statement, as you said, they're all brand-new. And I think with some of our zoning, planning, stormwater, name the committee, if somebody is absent, the chairman or whoever, there is somebody else to work for the leadership who is going to take over and know what they have to do. They're so new that they, you know, they need to, they need the guidance to be able to do it.
Yes, I just asked the, my colleagues to give, to be patient with them.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a new, it's a new committee. We keep on losing members for different reasons, and it will get better, I'm sure. But right now, they don't have a chairperson, so.
But I agree that if we can help in any way, we've been, you've been on school committee. You know, we've been, we know how to conduct meetings, then we should show them that. And if they have, and we should just be there to answer their questions. What if they have questions?
I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're going to-
Yeah, exactly. And we, yeah, I'm glad we're doing this.
At Tuesday's meeting, I'm going to suggest that the Board of Selectmen be invited to the September meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll have to work around your schedule, because, okay?
But I think they do Zoom. Don't worry about it.
I don't want you to do Zoom if you're away. So, I mean, I don't-
Oh, I forgot I'm going on vacay. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, no, yeah, I won't be back for that.
I strongly believe that-
But I'll be back on the 7th.
On the 7th, okay, so.
Now, will it be a Tuesday night?
It's a Tuesday night. It's usually the first Tuesday, but actually, the 7th. What day of the week is that?
I think it's a-
Monday, so the 8th is actually, well, it's-
Is it a Tuesday or a Wednesday?
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
But anyway, I'll-
September 7th is a Tuesday.
So, that actually is our meeting, but you want to come back now?
So, maybe their next meeting, the 21st or whenever.
No, it's, they meet once a month. So, is the board okay with waiting till October to meet with them?
I have no issue with that.
No problem.
Okay. We're not taking a vote on it, because it's not on the agenda.
So, yeah, if I could, Mr. Chairman, we do have a comment from Ms. Mellow, who indicated that she'd like to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi.
Yeah, we can hear you. Yes, Nicole.
Hi, Nicole Mellow. I just wanted to comment on Nancy's thoughts. I really thought that the committee had a disservice, the way that they came about. I had learned about the Easton, I don't know what, incident later. When I learned about it, I had a little bit of a better understanding of why this committee was formed. I'm still unsure what they are doing with their committee. I think that if, like Mr. Hall said, if we get together, if we tell them, maybe research what's happening in other towns, ways that if it did come to Dayton, that what they would do with the process, because it's needing a lot of, I don't know what the word I want to use, backlash, because we're not exactly seeing some of these situations in town. And it seems like, I don't want to say a waste of time, but if we're going to bring these situations, well, we need to bring ways to resolve them. I, the last presentation, I was extremely offended. I'm, I just, it was very offensive. And that's my opinion. I know Brett, your opinion was that the audience was unkind, and I, and I accept your opinion. I know that I, if I had spoke, I probably wouldn't have been kind, because I was very offended. That's why I take a step back to get a hold of my emotions and think of the situation. I just hope going forward that maybe we can look at who's going to be present, giving presentations, what they're going to be presenting. I mean, just some of the things she said were very offensive. But I think that going forward, with Nancy's ideas, with Mr. Hall's ideas, that we can maybe get this on track, and have it really be useful if a case is to occur, we'll be ahead of the game.
I agree. Yeah, I have no issue with that.
Just so people know, the subject, the person who spoke was on minority mental health, and she explained how minorities are affected differently than others with mental health as far as having access to it. And this one, I mean, I saw on Facebook, people questioned her credentials. She has a master's degree. She's going for a PhD. She's got a license as a social worker. And she's very well experienced, and she had a PowerPoint presentation. I understand some people might be offended by it, but I thought it was a good, good presentation.
Can I add more, or anything?
Yes.
I just, because you just went over what the presentation was, I, of course, was not offended by people of color's mental health issues. I was offended by the comment that all children are born racist. I think that right way puts us in a bad place. Not at all was I offended by people of color's mental health issues. I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, Nicole, I didn't hear that, but I will listen to the meeting again. I didn't hear that. I know she talked about racism can happen before the baby's even born because of the health care that the mother may have, not that the child would become racist because of that. But I'll listen to that presentation again.
Right, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I respond?
Mr. Chairman?
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to be clear. I hope you didn't see what I said and thought that what I was trying to say was, people don't have a right to disagree or dissent. I do. And I believe in that very much so. I'm just asking that we are a small, tight-knit community, and I think there's an appropriate way to express yourself. We've had people come to our meetings and accuse us of not listening to them, of trying to, I don't know, cancel their ideas. And so, I get concerned when I see people going to other boards' meetings and doing the exact same thing that they're accusing others of doing. I think we all just need to show each other respect and listen to each other. Really, like, I listened to what you said, Nicole, just now, and that, that makes sense to me. And we may not always agree on things like that, but I listened to you for what you were saying, and I agree. And I wish other people would do the same thing.
I agree to disagree. I do feel that everyone does listen to each other. I thought it was pretty civil, but I mean, we're not going to agree on that, and that's perfectly fine with me. That's just the way it like is. I respect you, and I hope you respect me, and I appreciate you taking the time to talk to me.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there any, any other public input?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment.
Yep.
To follow up on what you said, all committees appointed elected officials, so forth and so on, have to understand they're not just alone. As I said, the Stormwater Committee has experts in certain fields. But by the same token, we call on others, police chief, fire chief, you name it, that we need if circumstances cause for, whether it's public safety, or both police and fire are involved with that solar project that we're working on in Brook and Pine. And they're not members of the committee, but they have expertise that, per se, we don't have. So, everyone's got to remember, they're not alone. There's others that can help them, and they're, as a resource, okay?
Thank you. If no other public input, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Did you say second?
I hope so. No pressure, but please second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it. Thank you, Cable.
Thank you for being patient, Dave.